Are we ready to go?
Yes, we are ready to go.
Okay, so I'd actually like to start the session by hoping that everyone was able to celebrate Juneteenth this weekend. I had the good fortune on Friday evening to attend Mayor de Blasio's, actually Commissioner Gutman, who I see here, and I both had the pleasure of attending Mayor de Blasio's celebration, which was held at St. Nicholas Park in Harlem. And I was so touched by the celebration because it featured the city's youth with a high school chorus, with a drum and dance corps, and with an absolutely amazing young Brooklyn female Trinidadian-American poet Mia Prescott, who gave Amanda Gorman, who spoke at President Biden and Vice President Kamala Harris's inauguration, a run for her money. Senator Majority Leader Schumer was there quite properly, being proud of the work that the Senate and the House had done. But I believe that our deepest thanks should go to the generations of African-Americans, of African-American residents of our country, who over the years have continued to remind us of the need to have this important holiday. And with that, I will turn it over to you.
Good afternoon, and welcome to the New York City Planning Commission Review Session for Monday, June 21st, 2021. Before we begin our regular agenda, we will have a presentation by New York City DOT Commissioner Henry Gutman on his agency's proposed open restaurants program.
Actually, before Commissioner Gutman starts speaking, and welcome Commissioner Hank, I just wanted to make a few comments. I suspect that there are very few people on this Zoom meeting who haven't gotten a measure of pleasure out of the open restaurants program. And we also appreciate it because of the thousands of jobs that it was able to restore. And now, as when New Yorkers are getting vaccinated in impressive numbers, and we are laser-focused on safe reopening, I'm delighted to say that we're advancing a text amendment to the zoning resolution that is going to make it so much easier for restaurants to open sidewalk cafes, and thus allow the permanent open restaurants program that Mayor de Blasio has called for. Alongside City DOT, we couldn't have a better partner. The department is advancing a proposal to get rid of unnecessary zoning provisions that restrict outdoor restaurant service in too many areas of the city. And as we're seeking to undo these geographic restrictions that are baked into the zoning, DOT is working to launch a red tape busting program that supports safe and respectful of its neighbors' outdoor dining. We know that the COVID-19 pandemic has brought so very many hard lessons, but one silver lining is our collective and renewed focus on the critical importance of open air spaces, reimagining how we use our city's diverse public realm. And this includes thinking about how we best employ our 8,000 miles of city sidewalks and roadways to create more jobs and to promote our emotional, physical, and economic health. And with that, I turn it over to our partner. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you Chair Lago, both for the kind introduction, for the terrific introduction of our program as well. And I too enjoyed sharing the Juneteenth celebration with you in Harlem Friday night, and it was a truly inspirational evening, and one couldn't help but come away from it moved by everything that it represents. It was really quite a special event, celebrating a very special holiday. I think as, oh, and before I begin my remarks, let me introduce my colleagues from the DOT who are joining me today. We have Eric Beaton, who's our Deputy Commissioner for Transportation Planning and Management, and who will be sharing the presentation with me today. Julie Shipper, our Deputy Chief of Staff, Judy Chang, Director of Special Projects under the First Deputy Commissioner, and Corin Summer, Executive Director for Transportation Planning and Management, all three of whom will be available to help in answering any questions that the commissioners may have. I think anybody who was out and about this weekend, whether celebrating Juneteenth or Father's Day or both, would have seen countless New Yorkers enjoying outdoor dining. What began as an emergency response to the tragedy of the pandemic has become a critically important part of life in this city, as we have reclaimed our streets for the people. The purpose of the changes that we're proposing today and the program that we're proposing is to make all of this permanent, both sidewalk and roadway cafes, and to make the program safe and effective for all New Yorkers. For those who are wondering, our popular open dining program as it currently exists will continue in its current form through the end of 2022 without any change, including during the summer, this winter rather. But what we want to make sure is that open dining is something that's a permanent fixture in New York City. So that's why we're working with the Council and the Hospitality Allowance on Legislation and Land Use Actions that will lay the groundwork for a permanent program that will exist beyond 2022. Could we switch to the next slide, please? Let me briefly summarize what we're proposing to do. At the highest level, the Permanent Open Streets, Open Restaurants Program will be run by the DOT to make available to restaurants the option of sidewalk and roadway seating for outdoor dining. The program will look to balance the many needs of those restaurants with the other needs of those who use our streets and our sidewalks, keeping the restaurants and the other users in mind. Finally, we plan to take what has worked during the pandemic and what we've learned from that and from the prior programs involving outdoor dining, and use that experience to develop guidelines for the permanent program. And that's the process we will be following. Next slide, please. Before COVID, there were some outdoor dining opportunities in the city. There were a little over 1,000 sidewalk cafes. There were 100 small sidewalk cafes, small being a function of both the length and, as you can see, the barriers that separated them from other sidewalk uses. There were 102 enclosed cafes, and there were 25 locations in the city that had roadway seating. Next slide, please. As you're all aware, as a response to the emergency of the pandemic, during the summer of 2020, New York City revisited its rules and in many cases suspended them to allow restaurants to serve diners outdoors due to the restrictions that were put in place for health reasons on indoor dining. This program is credited with saving almost 11,000 restaurants and an estimated 100,000 jobs by allowing establishments to continue serving outdoors on the roadway, sidewalk, or both. We didn't require a participation fee, and we cut red tape, eliminating a lengthy DCWP review process. By many accounts, this program has been a lifesaver, not just to the restaurant industry, but also to the city that has seen outdoor dining and the incredible vitality it can bring to our sidewalks and streets as a beacon of hope and innovation in a dark time, a sign that our city can imagine a better future. And what we're undertaking today is to make sure that that happens and to make sure that this is a permanent feature of life in our city. Next slide, please. So what have we learned during the open restaurant program? What are the successes? First, no geographies off limits. While the limited programs pre-COVID may have been restricted to certain neighborhoods in certain areas of the city, we have in this program and propose for the future to have no such limits. Every borough, every neighborhood, every community is eligible to participate. The program was easy to access, which encouraged restaurants to participate. That is something we are intent on continuing. And with the addition of roadway seating beyond sidewalk seating, we've added more options for restaurants. And as you can see in this illustration, and as all of us know from walking in our own neighborhoods and communities, many of our great restaurants, part of what makes New York so special, have managed to make effective use of both. So what are the challenges? Well, first, clarity, consistency, and communication of the rules. If we're making the program permanent, we need to provide guidance on those issues, and that's something, that's the process that we're undertaking now. Second, we've discovered that there are some practical consequences of having the outdoor dining, issues in making sure that fire department vehicles have the appropriate turning radius, that safety signage and corridors of view at intersections are not blocked, that the restaurants can coexist safely, sharing sidewalks and sharing streets with those who also use them for other purposes. Compliance and enforcement have been issues that we've had to confront. And again, balancing the long-term interests of all sidewalk and street users is paramount. As I'm sure I don't have to remind the commissioners, we are in the process of re-envisioning how our streets and sidewalks are used. Today, we're talking about one important and exciting aspect of that, but between busways and bus lanes and bike bike paths and dedicated bike paths and improved pedestrian areas, we are changing this in many different respects, and it's important that we balance these various interests for the benefit of all those who use our streets and sidewalks. Next slide. Now, after the success last summer, in response to the pandemic, the mayor announced in September of 2020 that open restaurants would be permanent and year-round. A permanent program requires a series of different legal challenges, including a text amendment to allow more locations to be eligible for roadway and sidewalk seating. Next. So here's the vision for a permanent program. Eric Beaton will take over from here. Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Commissioner, and thank you to all the commissioners on this call. As Commissioner Gutman said, and Commissioner Lago, this is something we're very excited about, and we really see this as something tremendous for the city. So what I'm going to do here is just walk you through for both the street and the sidewalk programs, a little bit more about how we expect those to be administered and how they will look. But just first, for both sets of programs, one thing that's important is that we want to make this easy to understand and easy to use for all restaurants. And that's why we're bringing the whole program under one canopy here at City DOT, so that restaurants don't have to figure out, for here you go to DCWP, for here you go to DOT, you know, your buildings or any other part of the city that will have a kind of a one-stop shop. And we want it to be available all over the city. As many of you probably know, there were large portions of the city where sidewalk cafes were just completely disallowed previously, and we want to make sure that that's not the case. We also want to make sure that the program is accessible to everyone around the city without so much red tape as to have only the larger or higher-end restaurants be able to use it. We want to make sure that everything has removable tables and chairs so that street work and repaving and all the other things that happen on our streets can still happen. We want to make sure that there are clear and enforceable, clear path requirements and other citing criteria that are really needed for public safety and mobility. We expect that both programs will go through a DOT revocational consent process, which we think has the right balance of review and permissiveness. And overall, we expect that the rules will remain more or less the same as they are in the current emergency program, but of course, with lessons learned that we can incorporate into a permanent program. Next slide, please. So starting first with the sidewalk cafe. So first, any restaurant with ground floor space can apply for access, and these sidewalk cafes can be set up year-round. So that means wherever you are in the city, you know, midtown, any borough, if you have first floor access, first floor space to your restaurant, you can set up a sidewalk cafe. That cafe must be ADA compliant. That means that any New Yorker needs to be able to use it. We're still working through the details, but we expect that the regulations will be consistent with the current sidewalk cafe under DCWP, which is basically operation until midnight, Sunday through Thursday, and up until 1:00 a.m. Friday and Saturday. And we will make sure that these sidewalk cafes are subject to clear path and citing criteria, which, under the emergency program, there was a lighter touch approach to this. But if you'll just go to the next slide, please. Under the DCWP program, there was a much more substantial regime of clear path requirements, which I think both helps protect New Yorkers who use the sidewalks for mobility and for other access needs, but also does a lot of good things for emergency access, not just avoiding fire hydrants, but standpipes and other building access points. So we fully expect that this set of criteria will be very similar to what's in the existing DCWP program. We do think there are some lessons learned, both what we've heard from restaurants and what we've heard from the public safety agencies, as well as from the mayor's office of people with disabilities, that we want to make sure that we're building into the permanent set of rules. So this is an image of some citing criteria that are in our current guidelines. As part of this process, we will work through those detailed guidelines and make sure that they're not only available on our website, but also are available in a very clear form where they're easy to understand for restaurants and don't necessarily require hiring outside professional assistants. Next slide, please. So something that's important, and I want to highlight here, is that we are going to be updating the clear path requirements. And as you all know, there are portions of the city where sidewalk cafes are not allowed currently, and that's in part because there are some parts of the city where our sidewalks are very crowded, and it was sort of a very straightforward way to maintain mobility for pedestrians by just not having sidewalk cafes at all. One of the things we've heard is that we don't want to have those requirements, and we want cafes to be able to set up in more parts of the city. So one of the ways that we're going to be dealing with that is by allowing cafes to set up, but in busier areas, we're going to have wider clear path requirements. So in the majority of neighborhoods around the city, the requirement will be an eight-foot clear path or 50% of the sidewalk, whichever is greater. So on an 11-foot sidewalk, you can see on the left, that would mean an eight-foot clear path and a three-foot sidewalk cafe. In the image on the right, the eight-foot clear path leads to a seven-foot sidewalk cafe, because the sidewalk there is wider. But we know that there are places around the city where an eight-foot sidewalk is not substantial enough for the crowds of pedestrians. And so in the busier parts of the city, what we're calling the central business districts here, we will require either a 12-foot clear path or 50% of the sidewalk, again, whichever is greater. We've also heard from restaurants that there are some places where that may be too much clear path. So while the general minimum guideline will be eight feet, there will be a waiver process where we can go down to a six-foot clear path, which will be reviewed both by DOT and by the mayor's office of people with disabilities, just to make double sure that we are really maintaining an accessible clear path if we go below the eight-foot requirement. Next slide, please. And this is just a working sample of the areas you can see in blue where we're looking at for the larger 12-foot requirement. So you can see large portions of midtown, but also busy streets in other neighborhoods, including in the outer boroughs, places where we think that pedestrian foot traffic is higher. Next slide, please. Turning now to roadway seating, the idea behind this is that a business would be able to set up a seating in the roadway any place where parking is allowed. So, and when I say parking, I mean in the colloquial term, not in the deeply detailed DOT rules and regulations term, because it can also include things like a truck loading zone or other types of curb uses, but basically a lane of the street that is not used for driving. And, you know, as you all know, that is the vast majority of our curbs and parking lanes around the city. We will want to make sure we maintain public safety, so setups will have to make sure that they set up in ways that you're not blocking a stop sign, not blocking a fire hydrant. We will be working to have clear guidance and enforcement on sound, because one of the pieces of feedback that we had from the temporary program is that things like amplified noise were perhaps not appropriate. And compliance for people with disabilities will absolutely be required, which is required under the temporary program, but perhaps not as heavily enforced. And as you look at this photo, you can just see some of the things that we'll want to emphasize with the open air seating with a visual connection, so that the sidewalk is not blocked off, sturdy barriers on all three sides to help protect anyone dining inside. The spaces will have to be open to the sidewalk, and we're working together on what appropriate weather protection would look like, and the tables and chairs, and frankly, the whole setups will need to be removable so that needed roadwork can happen. Next slide, please. Something else that we're looking at for the roadway program is seasonality. So while the sidewalk cafe will be by default open for the full year, we are looking at the default for the roadway program being sort of during the warmer months. As Commissioner Gutman said, we're not making any changes to this during the temporary program. As we know, restaurants are still very much in the recovery phase. But as we think about a permanent program, we want to make sure that the city is able to appropriately clear snow and do other needed roadwork. And we want to provide times of the year where that's easier. We also know that there are safety considerations, particularly from the fire department and the buildings department around seasonality, as restaurants have set up heaters that would not ordinarily be allowed in the public right-of-way. But this is something that we're still definitely discussing with restaurants, both around what the details of seasonality would look like, and whether it would be appropriate to also have a waiver program for restaurants that truly believe that the outdoor spaces would be used in the winter months. Next slide, please. So something that we want to make sure is clear is that we want this to be an easy process for restaurants, that some clear feedback we've heard from restaurants about the current sidewalk cafe program is that it's challenging, and the need to bring in outside professional assistance is a real barrier. So we're going to have this unified DOT office for both programs, going to have clear and upfront guidance so that people are not having to set up and reset up, and with the idea being that visuals will be easy to understand, very much based on our street design manual that we think has been very successful in how to communicate things happening on our streets. The application process would be straightforward and online, and we would have a team of dedicated professionals at DOT who would be reviewing these, I think, with the goal being of both a quick expeditious review, but also an opportunity to provide some support for restaurants that have any trouble understanding the requirements. So while the temporary program is what we called self-certification, where essentially people would fill out a form and get an automated email, this will have some more review and process to it, including some needed public reviews, but we still do want to make the process simple and as quick as possible. Our current proposal is that it would be a four-year license window so that restaurants were not needing to come back to the city every single year to get set up, but that there would also be a very clear revocation process so that people who are repeatedly not following our rules could be fined or removed from the program. And that's something we've not focused on in the temporary program. We've very much focused on corrective actions and getting people into compliance. But we want to be clear that a four-year approval doesn't mean that the city can't come back and tell someone who repeatedly doesn't follow the rules that their ability to set up is no longer in existence. Next slide, please. So there are three main things that are needed to facilitate the program. We're here today mainly to talk about number one, which is the removal of the locational prohibitions. And I know City Planning will talk more about that, because that's the subject of the zoning text amendment that's needed. But we're basically trying to take out the text that inhibits this in some places. The second point that we need to do is changes to the sidewalk cafe program, which will be a combination of local law and city rulemaking, what we call Kappa or the Citywide Administrative Procedures Act. So this includes things like transferring the program to DOT away from DCWP, updating these design requirements, and creating the new clear path requirements, as well as the waiver process to help protect the pedestrian right-of-way. And then the third point, as Commissioner Gutman said, is we have to create essentially from scratch the rules and regulations around the roadway cafe program, which is something that didn't exist at all until about a year ago and has only existed ever in this temporary setup. So this includes basically the whole set of rules for the program, the citing rules, the fee structure, the review process, and soup to nuts. So again, while we're here to talk about the first thing today, the zoning text amendment, we just wanted to give a little bit of the full scope of the other pieces that will be happening over the next couple of years. Next slide, please. And just to give you that sense of the whole program, you know, we've been working on developing this permanent proposal and figuring out everything we need to do. We're now today beginning the shift into the legal mechanisms we need to bring that program into effect, which includes the zoning text amendments, the rule changes, and the city law changes. So we think that those changes will happen over the next year to year and a half or so with the new application process starting after that. So we think that the new program will be fully up and running by sort of the spring or the warm months of 2023, and we will keep the emergency program in effect until then so that there won't be any gap where these services aren't available. But so we will keep the ability to have both the streamlined roadway and sidewalk cafe process in effect until that new program is up and running. Next slide. So just to, you know, come back to what Commissioner Gutman and Commissioner Lago said, we think that the outdoor dining program has been just one of the best things to happen around the city. And what was otherwise, and it's just an incredibly tough year, and we want to make sure we take those lessons and we're not walking it back. We want to strengthen them and make them permanent. So we will have a tremendous amount on our website and lots of opportunities for feedback, but we're also happy to answer any questions or take any feedback that you all have here today. And I think with that, we're coming to the end of the DOT presentation.
Thank you, Eric.
And Ben, are you going to take it from here?
Yeah.
Yes.
And commissioners will take questions after the tax amendment, which is a pretty short presentation.
Okay. Well, good afternoon. My name is Ben Huff, and I'm a senior project manager at City Planning. Well, good afternoon. My name is Ben Huff, and I'm a senior project manager at City Planning. I'm joined by my colleague Carolyn Grossman-Mar, and we're pleased to present today on the zoning text amendment, which is our DOT colleagues discussed, is an essential element for facilitating the permanent open restaurants program. Next slide. So as previously discussed, there are three main legal processes to create a permanent open restaurants program. The first, which is the focus for the rest of this presentation, is the removal of locational prohibitions by text amendment. Unnecessary zoning restrictions stand in the way of thousands of restaurants from participating in outdoor dining past the emergency. This zoning proposal is key to unlocking the full citywide universe of applicability and consolidating control and accountability for the program under a single agency, the Department of Transportation. Next slide. So the pro- the proposed text amendment would remove the entirety of Chapter One, Article Four of the zoning resolution, and related texts in special districts and other areas that relate to sidewalk cafes, to fully remove zoning from dictating the location of cafes. This will allow any restaurant to apply to DOT for a sidewalk cafe if they can meet the required clear path and setting criteria. Next slide. A bit of context. In March of 2020, there were roughly 27,000 restaurants in the five boroughs. Forty-two percent of these restaurants were located in Manhattan. These restaurants range from small neighborhood cafes to more mid-sized, high-end dining establishments to multi-level catering halls for large events. For the purpose of this presentation, we will be focusing on the ground floor restaurants with access to the street, as it's these restaurants that have the ability to apply for a sidewalk cafe. Next slide. Uh, sidewalk cafes have long been a part of the New York City streetscape, and with them, the laws governing cafes have evolved over the years. When U-Lerp came into existence in the 1970s, cafe approvals were subjected to a full U-Lerp review as part of its revocable consent to use street space. Almost immediately, it was recognized that this level of review was onerous and time-consuming and difficult to manage for each individual restaurant. So in 1980, the commission put into place a framework attempting to streamline the process by naming areas of the city where sidewalk cafes were allowed. Since then, the program has been amended dozens of times to make more and more fine-grained distinctions on where and what kind of cafes are allowed in different areas. Up until COVID-19, zoning worked as the gatekeeper of where sidewalk cafes could exist. Next slide. Under the zoning rules, which are currently suspending, zoning dictates three different kinds of cafes and where in the city they can be located. Most commonly are enclosed cafes, which allows for readily removable tables, chairs, and fencing with no allowable overhead coverage other than umbrellas or retractable roofs. A small sidewalk cafe is an unenclosed sidewalk cafe containing no more than a single row of tables and chairs adjacent to the street line and can extend no further than four and a half feet from the building. The third is enclosed cafes, which are defined as extensions of the building into the sidewalk using light building materials and 50% transparency on its walls. Next slide. So as we said, zoning held the geographic restrictions of where these cafes, cafe types were allowed. The public could view where these cafes were allowed on City Planning's zoning and land use map or ZOLA application. So yellow allows only small sidewalk cafe types. You can see that sort of in the midtown area. Purple are areas where only unenclosed and small cafes were allowed, and sort of west midtown area. And green is where all cafe types were allowed. Importantly, you can see a lot of areas where cafes were not allowed at all, even if the sidewalks were wide and conditions would otherwise have allowed it. So red is areas that were specifically prohibited from having cafes, and blue are the residential areas of the city. So these would not allow any sidewalk cafes. Next slide. In March of 2020, the existing DCWP program, which is the Department of Consumer and Workforce Workforce Protection Agency, also previously known as the Department of Consumer Affairs, that program had 1,224 cafes actively licensed citywide, mostly on, mostly unenclosed, and the vast majority of which were located in Manhattan. Next slide. As a response to the COVID-19 pandemic, the New York state economy went on pause in March of 2020. This action resulted on a ban of indoor dining that impacted the industry harshly. We saw employment in the restaurant industry drop 64% from quarter one to quarter two of 2020, with the majority of those losses happening in Manhattan. Sadly, the city also lost some longtime institutions in the past year as continued restrictions and aversions to indoor dining made it very difficult for dining establishments to operate. Next slide. In order to provide support for the restaurant industry and the need to move dining outdoors, New York City stood up an open restaurants program that allowed for the emergency use of sidewalks and roadways by restaurants. This was achieved by suspending zoning and rules through executive order that allowed restaurants to conduct business in the right of way. All zoning regulations and admin codes related to the sidewalk cafe program were suspended, and an emergency self-certified program was set up at DOT. Street sweeping rules were scaled back, and restaurants were allowed to set up in the curbs lane to provide additional seating. Restaurants could go to a website that DOT created to apply for a sidewalk cafe, a roadway cafe, or a combination of both. Next slide. To date, over 11 and a half thousand restaurants are participating in the open restaurants program. In particular, the city saw a huge surge of outdoor dining occur in the outer boroughs. 10,000 restaurants are now using the sidewalk for some portion of their outdoor dining setup. Next slide. We've seen the challenges the NYC restaurant industry has faced from COVID-19, and open restaurants has been essential to them surviving the past year. An estimated 100,000 jobs have been saved by this program. The industry still has challenges ahead, but Open Restaurants has been able to provide the twin benefit of both helping small businesses flourish, flourish, while also making New York City streets and sidewalks some of the best dining options in the world. I'll say myself, um, it's, as someone who works on this project, it can be frustrating to get an outdoor dining reservation on a Friday. But at the same time, it's very exciting to see how popular the program has been. Next slide. During the emergency program, two and a half thousand restaurants were permitted in areas that would have been promi- prohibited or limited under existing zoning. But the proposed text amendment will allow them, as long as they meet the setting criteria outlined by DOT. So looking at the map on the right, in red are restaurants in specific areas that were prohibited by zoning. These include commercial mid-blocks, certain special districts, and under elevated rail lines, as well as other named congestion areas. In blue are all the grandfathered restaurants in residential areas. Zoning doesn't allow restaurants in residential areas, but many of these uses predate zoning and so have remained. We estimate there are about 2,900 grandfathered restaurants citywide, and 1,000 of them have participated in the open restaurants program. In yellow are the cafes and zones that have limited them to small typology. Next slide. There are many reasons why these areas were prohibited, but what we've seen is that cafes can work in many locations, many more locations than zoning contemplated. Just look at this picture of a cafe in Bushwick as a great example. What's more important is the sidewalk condition and having enough room for pedestrians, and that's a citing criteria, not a neighborhood criteria. So we really think that zoning is not working and that physical rules would work far better. Next slide. Dumbo is a special district that specifically does not allow sidewalk cafes, but we have seen some great examples of restaurants doing outdoor dining during the emergency program. This proposal will allow restaurants to apply as long as they can meet the citing criteria. All special districts will become eligible as a result of this zoning proposal. Next slide. The blocks around Grand Central are barred from having sidewalk cafes by zoning, and this restaurant would not have been allowed to have a sidewalk cafe. Under this proposal, restaurants in central business districts, uh, central business districts will need to meet a 12-foot clear path requirement to allow more pedestrian traffic, but will be allowed to participate as long as they can meet these additional requirements. Next slide. So those were all examples of areas where zoning explicitly barred restaurants from participating. Another gap in the sidewalk cafe program is restaurants in residential districts. In many cases, we know restaurants wanted to have sidewalk cafes in these areas, but, and would request zoning overlays to legalize them. This proposal would eliminate that burden. This will also, this will not allow new restaurants from occurring in these areas as of right, but it will allow restaurants that exist in these areas to apply for a sidewalk cafe. Also note that as a consequence of removing the zoning rules is that we are collapsing these different types of cafes, so the distinction of only small cafe zones will be removed. And this will work in conjunction with the supplemental clear path requirements that will address the need for wider pedestrian zones in some of the city's most trafficked locations. Next slide. And finally, ending the zoning program effectively ends a specific category in zoning called the enclosed cafe program. This program served a specific purpose pre-pandemic for joint DCDCP and DCWP review of sidewalk cafes with particular conditions, which will no longer be necessary or applicable in the context of the future permanent program in development at the Department of Transportation. There are currently 102 pre-COVID licensed enclosed cafes, and those would be grandfathered and allowed to continue in the future. Next slide. Other cleanup actions in the text amendment include removing definitions and cross, cross-references to cafes, removing text that precludes operable windows that service outdoor restaurants, ensuring that no enclosure provisions require a restaurant to be fully indoors as a condition of its zoning district, and clarifying sidewalk widening text to ensure it does not conflict with the operation of the open restaurants program. Next slide. So to summarize all, we are at the start of a multi-pronged legislative process. The text that is being referred out today will be referred to 59 community boards and five borough presidents for 90 days, and we expect the text to come back to the CPC this fall. We anticipate city council actions to be underway during the same period, continuing the process of updating the sidewalk cafe program and fully fleshing out the roadway cafe authority through a DOT rulemaking process. Also underway during the summer, and informed in part by the community board consultations, we imagine, will be a DOT design review process that city planning will be involved with. We do not expect a full program launch until late 2022 or early 2023 at the earliest, which gives a lot of time for restaurants to transition to the permanent program should they choose to do so. Next slide. So that is our presentation today on the open restaurants program and zoning proposal, and my colleagues and I are happy to take your questions.
Thank you to all of the presenters for condensing a lot of information. And at this point, I will turn it over to the commissioners for questions that they may have. Commissioner Capelli.
Thank you. First of all, uh, I have to say yay. Okay, uh, this is something that for 30 years has bothered me as I traveled around the world and saw, uh, how much more other cities on the international stage utilize their sidewalks to create a delightful experience. So, uh, very pleased that the, uh, at least some good has come out of this pandemic in that it has pushed New York City into doing that, which I had hoped we would have done long before. So, but thank you for your effort. My question is, in terms of fees. The, uh, uh, I certainly understood during the pandemic the need not to burden uh, the restaurants who are struggling to survive with fees and probably for some period to go, that's probably the case as well. But as you have said, the streets belong to everyone, and New York City has huge revenue needs. So I was wondering, is there any anticipated user fee or permitting fee that is going to be put into place so that these people get a specific benefit and it ought to be shared to some extent with the citizens of the, of the city?
Tha- thank you, Commissioner Capelli, for the question. Well, first, thank you for the reaction. That's our reaction to it. It is amazing that New York City for this long didn't have this as, as a feature. Our restaurants are treasures. Uh, and the notion that outdoor dining was restricted the way it was seems odd compared to other great cities of the world. With respect to the fee question, that's a subject that we're going to be looking at very closely. Your observation that this is public space being put to a private use, which we'd ordinarily call for a fee, is correct, and we will be looking at doing that. The countervailing balance, I mean, and again, you're, you're, you are also correct in assuming that in the immediate term, uh, under the emergency provision, there won't be a fee. Restaurants are still recovering. As the program becomes permanent, we are looking at, at the issue of coming up with a a reasonable fee structure. The countervailing balance, of course, is we want to make sure that this is widely available to everybody, you know, and, and not just to the wealthiest, most successful establishments charging the highest prices in the fanciest neighborhood. So uh, we, we will be looking at that issue with, with those two, those two features in mind.
Commissioner Cerulo.
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and thank you for your opening remarks about this program and, and the significance and importance of it, Commissioner Gutman. It's good to see you.
Good to see you.
I want to just say, I wa- I want to acknowledge the work of your agency in this period of time. Obviously, my work in, in Midtown East around Grand Central connected our joint work on behalf of our communities, particularly through this pandemic period, and really happy to see this moving forward into a permanent program. But I, I do have a couple of questions that could be helpful. You know, not only on the day today here in the role I play now, but as a former of the former, former commissioner of the former Department of Consumer Affairs, the role that we played in sidewalk cafe licenses was very much a gatekeeper, except for some enforcement responsibility. And so the idea that we could accomplish something like this for the industry and also streamline the way government works is a really positive thing for, for those that were serving. But I, the, the question is, uh, uh, in this respect, since this will go to the FCRC, I'm assuming that this will go to the FCRC for the revocable consent, is there no longer a license that will be issued to a business for the cafe? Or is, will it just function with a revocable consent? Or is there some other documentation that authorizes the legality of it? The reason I ask the question, just so you know where my head is going, is that are there any other laws or particularly with respect to the state and the SLA that refer to licenses versus revocable consents? And have we taken that into account so that we ensure that what we give a restaurant enables them to get the authority to do the other things that their customers would like, like ordering a drink legally?
Right. Uh, I'll, I'll ask the deputy commissioner. Could you respond to that one?
Sure, I'll, I'll, I'll start, and, and if, if anyone else on the team wants to add, please, please go ahead. But yeah, but yes, we are very aware of the SLA issues, and we spent an unbelievable amount of time with SLA over the past year as we were setting up this program, because we, we know that the ability to order drinks is so critical to the, the, uh, functioning of the program. And, and so while the, the, it would be a, a revocable consent as the main legal mode within the city, one of the reasons we're talking about both council legislation and rulemaking together is to make sure that whatever we do is also acceptable to SLA from that perspective. So we, there'll be an ongoing conversation with SLA through this as well, where, to make sure that what we do is acceptable to them. Obviously, we also need SLA at the table to basically Obviously, we also need S L A at the table to basically to agree that what we are implementing does function as a license for from that perspective as well. So that's that's a conversation that we'll need to keep having.
I I appreciate that, and I'm I'm glad to to know that this is already on on the minds. Because it it what we don't want is the no good deed goes unpunished theory of 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 moving the industry forward. The the one other question I wanted to ask was really focused on the clear path rules and sort of the geography that's sort of related to me. And you had two wonderful pictures of businesses in the Grand Central Bid District, Annie Moore's and Asteria Laguna. And I'm happy to see those there because they're wonderful places. But I I I I'm a little concerned about the the clear path rules, because there will be many businesses based on the clear path that we would have on different sidewalks in the district that would authorize or meet the requirements. And and I don't know if if the agency has done any type of review of those restaurants that actually are functioning now under the emergency program that you already know would not be eligible based on clear path. And and because we have a variety of of shapes and sizes and in sidewalks here in midtown. And 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 the idea that we potentially because of this, which sounds like a a great idea is to do it by the sighting and not the geography, but that we would actually be eliminating businesses that were able to have sidewalk cafes that based on this new test would not be. And and I and I have to say too, the the idea of how we define clear path, it's very clear how DOT has done it in this presentation and how city planning has done it in this presentation. But out in the field, the definition of clear path is very often not enforced or interpreted properly. And that goes to the N Y P D themselves, who just sees clear path as being the width of a sidewalk and not actually the clearance left from obstacles that are on the sidewalk. So I, as you could imagine, I'm I'm concerned about this and and whether or not there's a whole a population of restaurants that will will be left out of this amazing new program because of what looks like a great way to make judgments on whether they should operate is actually going to close the door on.
I mean, that's Commissioner Cerulo, that's you. You've raised a very important question. It's one that our agency has been giving a lot of thought to and continues to give thought to. And it's a subject that we've also discussed with with representatives of the City Planning Commission. The objective here in doing it by the site rather than geography is to be able to address those individual situations. And so so the the idea was to provide clarity in the definitions to simplify the process going in, which I'm I'm pleased that you you seem to think we've taken a good shot at that. That's the start. But then there's a waiver process. And the the idea there is, again, to be able to accommodate the individual sites that that may not qualify under the general rule, but based on where they are and what the circumstances are at that particular restaurant are just fine. And again, you know, we've had, there's a lot of input on this, obviously. You know, there there are many constituencies, including the disabled that have strong views on this, and and there are safety issues, there are all sorts of things. But what we've tried to do is strike a balance between clear general rules and the ability to evaluate each situation on its own merits. And the objective of doing it that way is to avoid precisely what you were describing, where a number of restaurants that are successfully operating today are no longer permitted to do so because of our rules. I mean, our our objective is precisely to avoid that situation while at the same time addressing clarity and the needs of all the others, all the other New Yorkers who share our sidewalks.
I I I appreciate that, Commissioner. I I I it gives me some comfort to know that that is already well, a concern, I I would call it a concern that we share, but also a focus on how that problem, if it arises, could be resolved on on behalf of the of the business community. And I would just throw out there to that that with with any luck, and I say this in a in what I hope is a helpful way, that the agency who has jurisdiction over other rules and regulations on our sidewalks and streets are is flexible to some degree. There were many businesses who could not participate in this emergency program now because of a parking regulation or because a bike share station came five feet longer than it could have. And there was not a lot of flexibility in modifying, not to eliminate, to shift and to modify, and hopefully that would be part of the work that would be done too, to ensure the maximum number of businesses that can participate would be able to. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cerulo. And I just want to emphasize what Commissioner Gutman mentioned, which is how heavily involved the Department of City Planning has been. Our urban designers have been working hand in glove. And this initiative, I think, has given us an even more heightened understanding of how our sidewalks operate in a very helpful way. Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you. Well, first, I want to add my voice to Commissioners Capelli and Cerulo and salute DOT for this innovation. After more than a year of deprivation, I would hope that restaurants that are full now, plus with the added capacity of of outdoor dining, can begin to make up the gap that they've sustained over the last year. So I I I think this is a an appropriate move and good move on on the part of the city. Two observations. Number one is, and I know this is a citywide initiative, and and that's certainly appropriate. But I would hope nonetheless that working with the appropriate community boards that Commissioner Gutman DOT would make an extra effort to make sure that small and and minority restaurant operators are made aware of this program. Because despite, you know, its citywide application, oftentimes, for whatever reasons, these businesses are outside of the informational flow. So I would hope that there would be an additional effort given to ensure that these businesses are made aware of 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 this very appropriate program. Number two is, and I'm thinking now of 125th Street, east of Lenox Avenue and west of Frederick Douglass Boulevard. 100, as you know, 125th Street sidewalks on the north and the south side are not deep sidewalks, certainly compared to Morningside Heights, where you showed Lamont, where there's on Broadway, those are those are deep sidewalks. And in many cases, you have these makeshift vendors who are on the street in front of 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 some locations. My point is, I would hope that where this happens, and hopefully it won't be often, where there is a a conflict between the expansion of of a a sidewalk location for a restaurant and a makeshift vendor that the city will facilitate. I'll call it the removal of this locational impediment.
So as as to your, thank, thank you for for the two comments, two questions. As to the first, absolutely, it is a priority of ours, just as it is with the Open Streets Program, to which the open restaurants program is obviously a a close relative. It is a priority of ours to make sure that the opportunities and the knowledge of the programs are facilitated, particularly in in communities that that don't always have the same opportunities. So that will absolutely be a priority. We will, we will invest heavily in getting the word out. And one of the reasons we're trying to make the the application process for the program simple so that you don't have to go hire a lawyer or somebody else to help you do it is precisely to allow to allow small, smaller enterprises, including in 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 equity neighborhoods to to participate fully. And and so that that is clearly a priority of ours. As to the the conflict between the ex the outdoor dining of a restaurant on 125th Street and street vendors who are there. Deputy Commissioners, is there anything, anything we can contribute to that? I know what I would do, but rather, rather than, rather than provide my own value judgment, I'll I'll defer to my colleagues to see what, if there is an answer to that question now, and if not, we'll work on it. Eric?
Yeah, I I I think it's fair to call it a work in progress, that vending enforcement in general has has been always been a very challenging subject. And and I think even more so as some of the conversations over the past year have resulted in 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 some of that enforcement moving away from the police department. So, you know, I I think we hear you loud and clear that that there are locations where we're vending and these these outdoor cafes can can conflict. And I would just, I I I think the best thing to say is we're working on it. We know it's a real issue and, you know, it's it's more than anything going to be an enforcement issue. And as a city, I think we're still working that through.
Right.
And I'm just throwing out there that the vendors are not following the same clear path requirements that DOT is establishing for this program. Their clear path is just about how wide the sidewalk is, not how much room is left for pedestrians. So that conflict is also an issue as we move through this process.
Yeah, I think I think, I mean, as Eric said, we we understand, we clearly understand that that there's an equity issue between between the establishments that are following the rules and going through the process appropriately in this program or others and and those who don't. And, you know, you know where our preferences are, it's a question of enforcement.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair Knuckles, for bringing your U M S expertise to bear on it's very helpful. Commissioner Rockershot.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. Yeah, I choose, I I love the program. I can't tell you how many restaurants I've been to in Queens and Brooklyn. And I enjoy it. I enjoy it being out there. The I am, I'm taking this from a different approach now. And some of the questions I have are, if you can, can you describe the file, the filing process? I know you're trying to, I guess, move away from having, say, an R A or P E sign the sealed plans and submit it for review. One of the questions was, is that if that's the case, will you have the owner provide a survey, site survey of their property so they know where their boundary is? And also to locate any, say, utilities like Con Ed Underground power source. And another thing I wanted to know was, will DOT be, or will they have a unit? Or will they enlarge their enforcement unit to specialize in inspections for these restaurants? And plan examiners from this particular process?
Eric?
Yes, so to the to the second question first, yes, we are expanding our staff, both in terms of inspectors and in terms of people who would functionally staff a new unit here at DOT, who who would both, you know, I I think calling them plan examiners is is right. But I think we would also expect them to be helpful in the process, not just sort of approving or disapproving. But I I think restaurants right now have been able to talk to a real live person here at DOT who can answer questions and talk them through any questions they have about the process. And we think that's the same spirit we would take into the permanent program of of not just sort of saying yes or no, but helping people reach compliance. And I think that that goes to your first question, too. The part of the way of making this more open and available is by not requiring that the R A seal, you know, we did that for some businesses, that's it was clearly a barrier to entry in the program. And we are trying to make it much simpler where a a restaurant owner can can apply for this on their own. And we want to make sure that the requirements are such that it is straightforward, where they're not having to necessarily submit a a detailed survey. But it's more about, as as sort of we said during the presentation, the physical constraints, you know, here is the type of manhole that you can't be on top of. Here is what a gas cap looks like. Don't put anything on the gas cap. Here's what a stand pipe looks like. You need to have so much space free on either side of the stand pipe. And otherwise, it's just sort of the 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 limits of the the storefront. So it is a little bit of a lighter touch. And I think, you know, some of that will end up playing out in in the field and why we have more inspectors. And yeah, but the intention is very much to try to be a little bit more open with the program than the current program is.
One last question, and I've seen this throughout citywide from the places I've been. I've seen a lot of the the additional areas that were built onto the street surface being built out of, say, wood frame. Or, I mean, they're not temporary type structures. So the question would be, would you require the owner to have a license contract to pull any kind of permit with DOT to construct such a structure?
Part of the intent of the permanent program is that the structures, particularly the structures in the street, would be temporary structures. And and that is in part a response to some of the things we're seeing out there that may have been appropriate for an emergency program, but we think are not necessarily appropriate for a permanent program where something starts to look much more like a building and done, you know, in theory, could be triggering buildings inspections and the whole set of things that go with that. We we will have, the requirement will be for a lighter touch, which may mean a a street level platform, but not the not the walls and and heavy roofs that you see now. So I I I think with the idea being that it's removable, the structures you see should be a lot lighter touch. Now, obviously, we want to make sure that it's safe, and that'll be part of the inspection process.
So for the businesses that already have those kind of structures, you will give them time to bring it into compliance?
Yes, yes. Yes, nobody, yeah, I mean, one of the yes, one, one of the things that we're trying to be careful about is to make sure that no one who has invested in in addressing what is today will face some some major problem in accommodating to the new rules.
Right, that was my word. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner, please.
Hi, thank you very much. I'm I'm thrilled to see this like everyone else. And, you know, I've always said that outdoor dining can add, you know, significant revenue to restaurants. And it's a wonderful thing to know that we're supporting our businesses this way. I have I have some questions, and and as someone who, you know, I live in Theater Burrows in Jackson Heights, which is a replete with restaurants. And so, you know, I'm I'm speaking to a little bit of my lived experience. You know, there are a number of dilapidated structures. There are a number of structures that are underutilized that seem unsafe or unsightly. And, you know, what is, what kind of support guidance? I mean, how are we going to enable communities to lodge concerns about those things? So that in the event that they do need to be removed, they can be removed. Could you speak to that process and and concerns that I think communities will likely raise through, you know, the hearings?
Sure, Eric, if you want to address the process, and then I have a thought too.
Sure, and I I think there's 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 two slightly different points that there's the in the permanent program, there will be both sort of the revocable consent process upfront, where where there'll be a chance for that for some public review. But also, the the consent is termina is is terminable at will by the city. It's so if there's an issue with a location, we can absolutely always revoke that consent and require it to be removed. It it sounds like the question is also just about the interim condition, though, where we we know that there are places where things have been set up and either the restaurant has gone out of business, or maybe they're using it for storage, or, you know, the a variety of things happening. either the restaurant has gone out of business, or maybe they're using it for storage, or, you know, the variety of things happening.
No, I'm comfortable with the, the interim. I am asking about, you know, how this will work under the permanent plan and the proposal that's here today, and what formal tools will be embedded in this process that will enable communities to lodge complaints or concerns that will then enable, you know, corrective action when it needs to occur.
Yep. So we, as, as the formal tool, we will absolutely be able to revoke and require removal in terms of how communities can get that to us. You know, certainly throughout this program three one one, we've taken those in and gotten them out to our inspectors. But our Borough Commissioners' offices will also have, have people who can be very much in touch with community boards, with elected officials and the public at large, and make sure that there are very clear places where if there's an issue, we can follow up on it.
So I, and I, I appreciate that, but I, I think we need that worked out in more detail. I think communities need a, a little bit more information about how that would work.
No, I think that's, Commissioner, I think that's a very good point. And I think we will, we will make sure that as part of the formal process we establish, there is a, a capability of community complaints, neighbor complaints, et cetera, to help trigger a process that could lead to consent being revoked under the appropriate circumstances. I mean, it's, it's a good point. It shouldn't be, it, it, it shouldn't be so informal that people aren't aware that it's in existence. It should be there as a, as a tool.
And, and if I may, I have a, a few other areas of, of inquiry that I, I don't think there's an answer. I hear that you're working on a lot of things. So, you know, these are questions that I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, remain unanswered, but that, you know, we very much like to see some, I don't know, put a little meat on the bones, so to speak, as you move forward. One, I agree with Commissioner Surrul on the concerns you raised regarding the clear path rules. You know, there was a, can, there is a, some position in discussion where we think there are more pedestrians. And that's why we want, you know, X number of feet of clear path. But, you know, where is that data coming from and how to restaurants who see right in front of them that there is, there is in fact the ability to support outdoor dining. And the volumes are not what you think, um, you know, where, how do they get through that process? It's not just midtown, it's, it's, um, you know, other areas as well. You know, I wondered if you could describe a little more detail why the six foot clear path, you know, I know that that exceeds ADA minimums and, you know, I think about West Forest Street, for example, between Perry and Charles, where there's no six foot clear path, and there are existing restaurants that have been there for quite a long time. You know, I'm, I'm curious as whether those cafes will continue to be able to operate the way they have. I, I am, I do believe a fee is important as we go down the, the line here. So would love to hear more about that. Would love to hear about guidance on sound. Again, similar issue, how do communities that have bad actors? You know, where do they communicate their concerns around sound and volume? I heard, you know, there may be a waiver for outdoor dining in winter. Would love to hear more about that. So those are sort of outstanding questions that I believe require a little more, a little more information.
Sure. So, well, the, you correctly, you, you correctly started your comments or questions by pointing out that we're working on it and and we are, and we are seeking input from all of the affected communities. And obviously, the input from the City Planning Commission Commissioners and your thoughts that you're sharing with us today are an important part of that process as well. As to sound, we have heard complaints. When I, when I go out and visit various sites, I hear complaints from neighbors who don't like a particular establishment, et cetera. And I think as Eric disclosed, you know, we have presumptive times for for being open that would protect against some of the late night stuff. And we do need to, we do need to adopt an effective policy concerning sound. For example, not allowing amplified sound outdoors, et cetera, to protect quality of life in the various neighborhoods. So, so we're working on those policies and we welcome your input and the input of, of the public. As to clear path, I would think that a restaurant that has an established practice over many years, like the example you cited of having successfully and safely operated in a particular location with a smaller clear path, you know, would be in a very good position. You know, we're not looking to close down anybody's business or to restrict something that's working well. So they would be in a position, I would think, a strong position to get the waiver. And as to the seasonal nature of it, this is one of the issues we're looking at, again, trying to balance the various competing uses and interests. In the dead of winter, outdoor dining was, was necessary during the, during the crisis during the pandemic because there was no other way to dine at those restaurants. And, you know, I, I don't know about you, but I bundled up and froze in order to frequent some of my favorite restaurants, help keep them going. And it wasn't bad for me either because I love their food. Will that be as popular in the dead of winter once indoor dining is permitted? It's not clear that it will be. Are there advantages to the restaurant owners in having a seasonal nature to their business? So they know in terms of staffing, that they hire on extra staff for, you know, April through December or November, whatever it ends up being. And don't have to staff the same way through the dead of winter. I mean, there are a lot of factors that we're taking input on. And then the other issue is, what are the other things that we need to do to the streets? That is, do we need to have access to the area underneath? And, and does it help that if we have specified months in the winter? When we know that absent, absent somebody asking for a waiver, we'll be able to get to the things underneath where the outdoor dining is.
And I think that, that point is well taken. I will say that those examples of the smaller clear path that have functions just fine, um, you know, I hope that we perhaps look at the clear path requirements and recognize that, you know, there, we are a city with a, a lot of needs on the sidewalk and that perhaps the clear path minimum guidelines here might be excessive. You know, we have examples of where our clear paths are functioning fine. So I will leave it at that and, and let another commissioner ask questions. Thank you.
Sorry. And, and one more point before we, we close here on sound. We are not allowing amplified sound as part of this program. So, uh, similar to what has been, um, in process for the, the sidewalk cafe program.
Right. That doesn't mean everybody, that doesn't mean everybody follows the rules, but we will, but those are the rules.
Commissioner Marine.
Thank you, Chair. Um, I, first of all, to, to, to Commissioner Gutman and his team, and of course, the DCP team that has worked on this, um, kudos. It's a very well thought, thought out presentation. Um, it is something that the city is in need of. I would agree with all of my commissioners when they say it's been long overdue. I find it quite interesting that, uh, New Yorkers are not cynical and don't mind people tracing through their personal space while they eat. So that's very, um, interesting to note. And so my, my questions, you know, a, a lot of the questions that I, I wrote it down, a couple of questions as the presentation was being made. A lot of them have been answered, excuse me, queried and answered, um, by my commissioners and your team. The two that I wanted to concentrate on were, and I just heard, and I'm sorry that I didn't get her name correctly, the young lady that just spoke. We talked, she talked about amplified noise, Miss, um, sorry, wrong glasses here.
Julie.
Shipper.
Julie Shipper.
Sorry, Julie, Julie, sorry, Julie.
No, that's all right.
And so, and so, you know, she said that amplified noise will, will not be allowed. And, and, and I was going to query about that if amplified noise and what the decibel levels would be. Having visited, um, a couple of neighborhoods that do have, in the Bronx, specifically in the Bronx, that do have these um, outdoor seating activities and the muse, the, the noise level is just such that the community is, is overwhelmed with speakers and decibel levels that you can't even hear inside your own vehicle. So I'm glad that that has been thought of and, um, will be addressed through this process. The other question that I have, because I hear that it is the city's intention to carry this permanently, as an institution, which is wonderful, is that of sturdy barriers? I'm, I'm, my concern would be, I, you know, the definition of sturdy. And the reason why I say that to you is, we've had a couple of incidents where folks have intentionally run over folks down by the West Side Highway back in two thousand seventeen, eighteen. We also had an incident this weekend in the Bronx where it's questionable as to whether or not somebody tried to run somebody down. And I'm really concerned. Excuse me. For those folks out dining, especially in the direction of traffic, will there be any more, I guess, firm of a requirement of a sturdier structure to protect the, the, the folks dining, um, in the outdoor space? Because it, it may not be intentional. It could also be an accident where a car careens into the space. So I, I would hope that in, in future considerations, as we move along with this process, that thoughts will be given to that if it's going to become a permanent program.
Thank, thank you, Commissioner. And as to that, as to the last point, uh, yes, the, the, the contemplation is that there will be a requirement, as there is now, that there be barriers that are intended to protect diners under the circumstances that you've described. Now, the, the, the issue of what's happening in general in terms of driving in the city and recklessness and excessive speed and the consequences of that. I mean, I can tell you in this position, that's something that wakes me up in the middle of the night. And not just with respect to, to the potential of them hitting, hitting an outdoor restaurant. You know, I, in this position, I get an email anytime there's, there's a, a collision in the city of New York that results in a serious injury or fatality. So, um, you know, the issue you've raised is a very real one. And, you know, we need enforcement. And again, on the sound part, the rules are there, but we need more resources and better enforcement. Because as I said, we get, you know, when I go visit very successful outdoor dining or outdoor streets, I hear those complaints, you know, they'll, the commissioners here, neighbors will come up, you know, I've got more notes and cards and I've given out cards to people who then write to me. I mean, we understand that's a problem. We will have the appropriate rules. Um, the issue is going to be enforcing and we will, we will do everything within our power to enforce.
I appreciate that. I really do. And, and I wouldn't want to be on the, on the other end of that phone call. So I really, I feel for you. Having, you know, to be single phone call like that. So we're all concerned for our pedestrians and our inhabitants of the city. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Commissioner Carolyn Grossman, City Planning, if I just might add, um, that DEP, which enforces the noise code, has been a very instrumental part of the interagency team working on the proposal that's in front of you and the environmental review. So, well, the commissioner said, you know, everything is, it really comes down to enforcement and giving them the appropriate tools. We have been working very closely with them because the environmental requires us to make sure we're addressing this issue really satisfactorily, to make sure that anything that the, the future program has, that we're giving them more tools and more teeth to be able to enforce, enforce the noise rules that are on the books already through the noise code and, and, and the existing program material. So just to give you some assurance that they're at the table, they've been very much at the table for the past year as we develop this and continue to be so.
Thank you for that. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Marine. Commissioner Bernie.
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, well, first of all, I would just add my voice to the general sentiment already expressed that this is a really welcome initiative and long overdue. Uh, and I think, you know, just speaking to Commissioner Marin's point, I think one of the benefits of making this a permanent program is that the restaurants will be prepared to invest more in the structures that they're erecting, and they will become stronger and more, more robust. And I do remember in my neighborhood, uh, where there have been many temporary parking lane cafes, uh, put up with rather flimsy material. And we had a good storm came through and took half of them out one weekend. They had to go back and rebuild them all. So hopefully, uh, we, we'll see better designs, uh, more permanent structures. They'll have an opportunity to not only make them storm resistant, but, but heat them to extend the season when they can do outdoor dining. And you see this in, in Paris and Copenhagen where they, they have a year round program. So I think we are going to see better, better structures. But you know, one sort of downside of that, I think, and I'm assuming you've talked with sanitation about this, there was one restaurant in my neighborhood, uh, that closed, as restaurants do, I mean, not just during the pandemic, but there's a fair amount of turnover. And the sidewalk cafe structure sat there, abandoned and continued to deteriorate until one day sanitation rolled up with a couple of big garbage trucks and smashed it all up and cutted it off. So I'm wondering, is that something that's sort of built in into the planning? And obviously, if they're more, if they're more robust structures, that could be more of a challenge. So that's one. And the other sanitation issue is the sort of general garbage collection issue that obviously becomes more complex once the street becomes, um, you know, fairly well crowded out with, with structures. So those are just a couple of things that might be, that might need some attention.
Sure. Eric, do you, do you want to share thoughts on those?
Sure. So, so to, to the first point, like, yes, as, as with, uh, with, uh, other agencies, sanitation has been very much at the table in, in this process. And, you know, we, we will do everything we can to make sure that, that restaurant owners are responsible for these structures. But there, but there's no doubt that that situation will be repeated where we, the city will have to occasionally take down what is functionally a a pile of trash on the street at that point. So we, we want to do as little of that as possible, but it's, it's part of why there's, you, you know, the potential for a fee for the program is to make sure that we are able to support services like that. And then your point about sort of the, the, the larger trash collection is also good. And one of the things that, that we'll be doing here at DOT as part of this program is, is hiring a set of, of sort of curb management planners where, in, on, on streets that are heavy with restaurants and where you can sort of get a wall of, of cafes along the whole thing. We'll have people who can work with them and make sure that we're finding places for, you know, whether it's trash pickup or deliveries or, 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 you know, accessory drop offs, all the other things that need to happen along the street that are, are not a problem when you have one restaurant, but are absolutely a problem when you have a whole series of restaurants next to each other. So in, in those circumstances, we will work closely with the group of restaurants and make sure we can find a solution that, that works for all the, the things on the street. So, you know, we'll, we'll try to make it as, as simple a process as possible, but we know that there are some places where it will need that, the extra level of handholding.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bernie. Commissioner Levin.
Um, yes, thank you. I sort of hesitate to go all the way back to the beginning, but I guess had, I had dinner in a roadway cafe last night. So I think, you know, I'm putting my, I, I put my mouse where my, whatever were thoughts were last night. So this is not, my comment does not come out of any hesitation or enthusiasm, lack of enthusiasm in this properly set up. But I guess I find out wondering, well, so geez, some previous generation of planners thought that the planning idea was good to, uh, you know, look at zoning and take certain area completely offline for sidewalk use. That is a land use planning, I was bad to have sidewalk cafes in certain areas. Obviously, now the world has changed and we're taking a look at it in a different way. But I think embedded in those initial planning considerations was the idea that there are some places where a sidewalk cafe would be problematic, like on a residential side street or a place where the sidewalks were simply too narrow. So I'm wondering if by shifting from a zoning regime to, um, this citing regime, um, how much, um, the revocable consent process will be discretionary? Is there any judgment applied in granting a revocable consent beyond just looking at the clear path and obstructions criteria? Will there be quality of life considerations applied? You mentioned the process of, um, hearing from communities in the public hearing. How much, um, sort of qualitative consideration will be applied before deciding that a particular location is sort of qualitative consideration will be applied before deciding that a particular location is appropriate? Um or is it all going to be quantitative?
I think it I mean, I think it's going to be both. Obviously, the quality of life considerations are important, too. But in terms of uh in terms of proceeding in this fashion, where it's site specific rather than through a zoning approach and I I readily admit no city planning credentials that would qualify me to address this issue um in from a position of of expertise. But having heard some of the examples, for example, the fact that Dumbo was an area where outdoor dining under the existing regime would have been absolutely forbidden. Having had a spectacular uh Father's Day dinner with my grown children and granddaughter at an outdoor establishment in Dumbo last night that had been closed for the pandemic and we thought was going to go out of business and just reopened. And seeing how in that neighborhood, for example, which would have been considered out of bounds, uh the outdoor dining has just blossomed and all these restaurants uh that were threatened during the pandemic have just, you know, it's 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 like a the quality of life in that community has dramatically improved. We have open streets that have that are filled with tables to accommodate the overflow from the restaurant. You can take out and eat there. So, you know, it it uh I think the idea of addressing quality of life with respect to specific locations and specific sites um, you know, is part of the contemplation of our of our plan. And, you know, we're we're comfortable that it's an improvement over um over the the previous approach through zoning. I I take it you're not defending the previous approach to zoning. You're just
No, I'm just wanting to be sure that we're 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 taking off the guardrails. We want to know what's uh then what tools are going to be available when the party gets taken to the street? And we need to shut a place down. And, uh, you know, zoning isn't going to be the tool to do it anymore.
Right. It's going to be case. It it will be specific to the location and the site and the particulars of of what's happening at that site. And it will be, it will, of course, be sensitive to community concerns, both both on the going in and on the on uh an available process to ask us to revoke.
The revocable consents are a discretionary action? It's not just that if you check all these boxes, you get the consent?
I mean, Eric, do you want to speak to the details of the process?
So we and and just I'm I'm not our agency revocable consent guru, but I'll I'll do the best I can. Um, you know, I think we want to try to strike that balance where we're not being entirely arbitrary about it. You know, it's not just based on sort of someone's feelings about a particular neighborhood or another. So we do try to to ground it in in quantitative criteria wherever we can, but where it can't be quantitative. It is very much based around sort of the health and safety powers that the city has. So we always want to start from that 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 basis of 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 using rules. But then, you know, trying to make sure that we do have some ability to say if if there's something, if there's some reason this place is different. You know, most these places, we would usually allow an awning. But if you put something through the sidewalk there or we go into a subway, you can't have a consent, right? Like we always have some rule, some ability to look at at the the specifics of a location. And I think that's what we're talking about here is we want it to be as straightforward as possible and not have each one sort of be feel like it's being decided for the first time. But it but if there's an issue at a location, particularly where there there is a health or a safety line you can draw to it, then then, of course, we have the ability to to do something different there.
Um was your you mentioned the challenges that you'd heard about in the um past year. Um have you taken a look at three one one calls about, you know, various issues that these um cafes have raised and how is that?
I can speak to that. And we've taken, we've worked very closely with our partner agencies and with three one one to make sure that we are really up to date on the latest um latest complaints, latest challenges. And we've compiled that. And that is something that we're really thinking and working towards. And the permanent process is planning for all of those challenges that we've seen.
Okay. Is there a way you could provide some summary information about what you've um learned to us?
I think that, I mean, just some high level, I think some of the big things that we've learned from our partner agencies is, you know, some of the turning radius um turning
Yeah, I'm not I'm not I'm I'm thinking about public public concerns, the partner
Publicly.
Things I assume you can get hold of. But but what have you heard from the public? And and it doesn't need to be provided right here. This is obviously going out for referral. It'll come back. We'll have a long conversation about it. But as the commission is thinking about implementing this, it would be helpful to me at least to know also what you have heard from the public to inform the shaping of these rules.
Sure. And I think we can get back to you on on the exact specifics.
That's all I meant. Thank you.
If I might just jump in for one moment, Commissioner, just to mention, we we can certainly get back to you more holistically. But I do know that, for instance, on the noise issue that it that is an area where we have jointly looked with the EP at some of the noise complaints. And at my recollection is they are not spatially um uh in any way representing the areas where we didn't allow cafes before, right? They're 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 much more common in areas where cafes were allowed in the past. And I mentioned that just to say to your prior point about, were we using the zoning to really say cafes, you know, can never work in this area and that we're losing that tool? I would actually say that's not that's not really how the zoning was working, right? The zoning theoretically was working to try and, you know, to try to say these areas cannot have cafes. We can't figure out a sighting way to have them. But I think what we're actually seeing is that there just were a lot of calls historically, um whether, you know, things like under an elevated where we've just changed our mind upon practice or where they just weren't fully contemplated over time, like a number of special districts um where or or in residential areas where that's not necessarily the place where we're seeing the strongest nexus between allowance and the need for really strong management in in how the cafes actually function. But in places where they are bringing up new issues, like the the, you know, where we set where we didn't allow them because we really need more clear path than a cafe otherwise would have allowed, or where, like in a residential area, noise might be uh more of an issue, you know, it it or in a different way. Those are places where our interagency partnerships and the environmental work has really been focused and thinking about how those new areas might create new complexities. But again, I think what we've seen is that the residential areas in particular, it's not where we're we're seeing the most of those those challenges.
Well, that's reassuring. Good. Thank you.
Commissioner Edie.
Good afternoon, everyone. Um and I add my voice to commend the department for this work. I think this will continue to add um to the city's livelihood. So thank you. Um just and this is something I'm sure you've given some consideration to and have dealt with before in other um sidewalk cafes. But as part of the revocable consent, is there an additional insurance requirement required by the business? You may have covered this, but I don't remember what was said.
Um Commissioner, I can jump in here. Yes, typically for revocable consents, there is a fee structure that does include the that the applicant provides certificate of insurance as well as um generally, there's a deposit. So all of these things, we were just to also circle back to a previous point about um what leverage we have to make sure that, for instance, abandoned structures are handled in a timely way. Those are the types of things we can use to leverage to make sure we are also helping to facilitate better quality of life.
Got it. And and the certificate of insurance is required to cover the outdoor space as well as what happens inside the space. I I'm not that familiar with how the insurance for restaurants work, but if there was a slip and fall or some type of occurrence on the sidewalk outside of the establishment, the business as opposed to the city would be um held liable as opposed to the city.
Um, that's not exactly my area of expertise, so we can get back to you on that. I know that right now as we uh ask applicants to self certify, they are ticking a box that does certify that their insurance is adequate to cover both, you know, to 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 cover a number of events that may occur in their seating spaces now. Um but I I just have to get back to you. Yeah.
I I can speak to this just for a moment to note that the prior program under the Department of Consumer and Workforce Protection does require an insurance uh form. And I again, I think this is one of the areas where under self certification, there's a little bit less um uh checking of those uh policies and specifics. But the expectation is that, you know, the that the 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 work and the specifics of those policies would apply in the future uh as well, although hoping that the the process and the sort of bureaucracy of checking that and and how the, you know, how that whole process works can be made a little bit simpler. But to your specific point, typically, a restaurant will have insurance that covers its interior space. And when it is applying for a cafe, it would it would get a policy that extends to that exterior space. And so that is a form of insurance that has existed that all of the prior licensed cafes uh have been, you know, demonstrated to to have.
Uh, thank you. That that was my hope and assumption, but it's nice to have it confirmed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. I don't see other hands raised. And I just want to note that as usual, I so appreciate the commissioners' questions. Uh, we and by we, I mean, both the agencies that are on this call and the others that were mentioned, um including significantly, the mayor's office of people of persons with disabilities have been working on this for almost a year. And yet, through your questioning, you continue to pull out new facets of the proposal. And with that, we will then refer the proposal to all fifty nine community boards for sixty days. And thank you, DOT in particular.
Thank you. And thank you. Thank you to all the commissioners. Uh, we appreciated the insightful questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Ryan, having taken an hour and forty five minutes on the first item.
Yes, well, yeah, I will note that the uh that was our first item for referral as it was a citywide zoning text amendment. Um I will also note, and I think anyone who is watching can note this, that there there's a quorum present. Um a quorum definitely asked questions. Um and uh so on to our second item on the agenda, which is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Manhattan Community District Four. And our presenter is Sylvia Lee.
Thank you. Um, good afternoon, commissioners. Great. Um, this is a private application by RXRSL owner LLC and Terminal Fee Owner LP for zoning map and zoning text amendments. Um, the applicants are seeking these actions to facilitate the long term adaptive reuse of these exist the the two existing buildings, the Starleigh High and Terminal Warehouse, and to better integrate them into the West West Chelsea neighborhoods in Manhattan Community District Four. Uh, next slide, please. Um, the project area, two full blocks outlined in red located between Eleventh and Twelfth Avenues and West Twenty Sixth and Twenty Eighth Street is within um a median density of intensity manufacturing district M two three, where permitted uses are limited and max F A R is two point O. Um, these two blocks are occupied by two historic buildings, as I mentioned previously, um Starleigh High and Terminal Warehouse. Um, the project area is a few blocks south of Hudson Yards and immediately west of Special Chelsea, uh West Chelsea District, um in terms of land uses and character in the surrounding area. And there are a variety of uses, including low to mid rise industrial commercial buildings um as well as higher density residential mixed use buildings. Um, there is a Connet facility immediately north of the project area, the um light pink uh is toned up site. Um, and also a Department of Sanitation Repair Shop immediately to the south in the same color um shown on the land use map. Um, to the east is the heart of West Chelsea Neighborhood, um where there is a dynamic mix of art galleries, commercial and mixed use buildings. Um Hudson River Park is located to the west of the project area. Um, I'll note that there is a pedestrian crossing connecting the south sidewalk of Twenty Sixth Street to the park. Um, the closest transit stations are Twenty Third Street ACE Station and the Thirty Fourth Street Hudson Yard Seven Station to the north. Um, the M twelve bus provides connections to the third to the Thirty Fourth Street Seven Stop and to Twenty Third and Fourteen Street Subway Stations. Um, a private shuttle bus operated by the Starleigh High Building provides additional services to Penn Station, Port uh Port Authority Bus Terminal, Brent Central Terminal and West Twenty Third Street. Next slide, please. Here are two images of the two historic buildings uh subject to the proposed action. Um, Starleigh High on the southern block and Terminal Warehouse on the northern block. Um, both buildings predate the M two three zoning on the site and have legal noncompliant F A Rs and bold conditions. Um, I'll note that they are also located, both are located within the West Chelsea Historic District. Um, Starleigh High Building is an individual landmark itself. Um, next slide, please. So I'm going to walk through a few um slides with photographs of the project area. Um, so here uh in the top left photo, you can see Terminal Warehouse. Um, it's the Eleventh Avenue Frontage where there is a building entrance. Um, and in the bottom left photo is the Starleigh High, um also the Eleventh Avenue Frontage. Um, next slide, please. Here on this top left image, um you're looking west from Eleventh Avenue on Twenty Seventh Street, where Terminal Warehouse is is to the right and Starleigh High is on the left. Uh, in conjunction with the proposal in front of you, the applicant is also planning to activate West Twenty Seventh Street uh for both buildings. Um, next slide, please. Uh, here you see both buildings from Twelfth Avenue Frontage. Um, so I'll note that, you know, these frontages are the less customer oriented frontages for both buildings. Um, top right photo shows Terminal Warehouse, Twelfth Avenue Frontage. There is an existing uh building entrance. Um, the Starleigh High Back of House serve back of house service area is pictured in the top left image, uh which runs along um the building's Twelfth Avenue Frontage. Um, next slide, please. So before diving into the proposed actions in more detail, um I'll briefly go over some background in each building, including their history and existing conditions, um starting with Terminal Warehouse, which is the um which is on the northern block of the two blocks and the older building of the two. Um, so the Terminal Warehouse was construct constructed in the eighteen nineties. Um, one of the first full block multi floor freight terminals built in West Chelsea. It was used by department stores and private individuals for the storage of goods, including cold storage. Um, but the building's large arched main entrance uh in the middle of the Eleventh Avenue facade and corresponding interior hall allows trains to pass through the center of hall, the center hall of the building, pausing for loading and unloading at the time. Um, the southwest and north facades of the building were punctured by numerous exterior openings, as you can see in this historic photo. Um, and these are for loading, um some with elevated loading platforms. In the last twenty years, Terminal Warehouse was converted over time from self storage to manufacturing offices and commercial uses. Next slide, please. Um, so it's a nine story eighty five foot tall building uh contains about seven point three F A R, which totals about one point one million square feet of floor area. Um, it's currently primarily vacant with some tenants, including eating and drinking establishments and offices. Um, there are several storefronts, windows and doors um to access from uh the ground floor retail and other building sections. Um, the building came under current ownership in twenty eighteen and is currently being repositioned and renovated pursuant to changes approved by the LPC. And they also include, as a right bulk and use changes under the existing zoning. Um, so I'll note that, you know, the the vacancies in the building are, you know, partially due to the fact that the building is undergoing renovation. Um, so as part of this full building renovation, uh former storage space will be converted into a new office space, which is a permitted use under existing zoning. Um, so approximately two hundred thousand square feet um in the building would be carved out to create double height spaces and courtyard um in the center of the building. Um, and this floor area will be re relocated to the western portion of the building as part of the new penthouse program. Oh, sorry, new office penthouse program. Um, so in addition, the ground floor will be repositioned to include food and beverage and retail uses. Um, the proposed actions, which I'll go over in greater details later, would allow a wider range of uses and help introduce a more dynamic commercial and retail program into the building. Um, I also know that owner, the owner will is also undertaking a major restoration of historic features of the building. Next slide, please. So moving on to the southern block, the Starleigh High Building was built in nineteen thirty-one, a joint venture by Star, Starred Investment Corporation and Lehigh Valley Railroad. The building was built directly over the working freight yard and adjacent to the commercial west-side piers, and was an intermodal facility that combined freight, warehouse, and office. Its unique structure enabled railway freight cars that were loaded onto the piers to move directly into the building for unloading and storage. Rail lines were removed in nineteen sixty-six, and the building itself was landmarked in nineteen eighty-six. Next slide, please. So the Starleigh High Building is a nineteen-story, fourteen-point-eight FAR legally non-compliant building, and it contains about one-point-eight million square feet of manufacturing and commercial floor area. RXR acquired the Starleigh High Building in twenty-fifteen and has since modernized the building, including, you know, installing retail food hall expo spaces at the ground floor, adding a new building entrance on Eleventh Avenue. This also includes various infrastructure and resiliency upgrades. The building's tenants currently include line manufacturing businesses, several fashion designer studios, storage warehouse design spaces, and auto service establishments and truck terminal, commercial offices, and some other uses, including a food court primarily serving tenant employees. Again, I'll speak to this more later. The applicant seeks the proposed actions as part of its midterm and long-term planning effort. While the building is currently substantially occupied, the applicant notes that as leases are turned and spaces vacated and rearranged, the proposed zoning would allow more of a great, would allow a greater variety of uses not currently allowed in the M-two districts, such as academic uses and more types of retailers. Next slide, please. As noted earlier, in the project site is Zone M two-three. It's a manufacturing district that permits manufacturing and limited numbers of commercial uses. The maximum FAR is two-point-zero. The bulk is governed by a maximum street wall height of sixty and then a sky exposure plane. So this is a district that is quite common to Hudson River piers and includes some inland industrial areas as well. And the applicant seeks to change the M two-three zoning through map and text amendment to, again, facilitate the proposed adaptive reuse of the two buildings. This also includes modifying some of the underlying regulations that support the changes and programming of these two sites. Next slide, please. So specifically, the two applicants jointly seek a zoning map change that would rezone the project area from M two-three to M two-four and extend the Special West Chelsea District over the project area. Separately, a zoning text amendment is being sought to establish a new sub-area in the Special West Chelsea District, Sub-Area K, to permit additional uses, modify some of the related regulations. In the next few slides, I'll go over each of the proposed actions and their different aspects of the proposal in more detail. Next slide, please. Map amendment first. The post-map amendment would change the underlying zoning again from M two-three to M two-four. And the change would increase the permitted FAR from two to five, bringing it closer to alignment with the FARs in the vicinity and reducing the degree of non-compliance for the two historic buildings. Just for context, I'll note that M two-four is a district that is also mapped in Clinton between eleven to twelve avenues, you know, between the Hudson River piers and residential mixed-use districts further inland. The map amendment would also extend the Special West Chelsea District to cover the entire project area with special provisions to be introduced through the zoning text amendment. Next slide, please. So the text amendment, as I mentioned earlier, will create a new sub-area in the West Chelsea Special District, Sub-Area K, and establish special provisions. I'll go through each of the modifications in the next few slides. Next slide, please. So first on use, the proposed Sub-Area K use regulations would expand the X-as-a-right uses permitted in the underlying M-two-four district to include a wider variety of community facility and commercial uses. I'll note that these are uses allowed in the adjacent C-six-three district in West Chelsea, just east of Eleventh Avenue. So these include community facility uses, medical offices in Use Groups Three and Four, and a greater range of retail stores, including a large retail over ten-thousand square feet. So different from the adjacent C-district regulations on these two project sites in the, in Sub-Area K, no residential use, community facilities with sleeping accommodations such as storms or hotels would be permitted here. Further, the applicant proposes that these additional community facility uses and retail uses be allowed with certain floor area caps. I try to illustrate that in the diagram on the slide. So specifically, a max of twenty-five percent of each building's floor area can be occupied by the additional proposed uses and the, the community facilities, food stores, and regular-sized retail stores that are not otherwise permitted by the underlying M-two district. And on top of that, large retail department stores, for example, over ten-thousand square feet in Use Group Ten A may occupy an additional fifteen percent of the building's floor area. As you can see on the illustrative diagram, and the rest of each buil, the rest of each building, sixty percent of the buildings may be only occupied by uses permitted by the underlying M-two-four district, such as manufacturing and office and limited set of other commercial uses. Next slide, please. Separately, the applicant proposed the, the following adjustment, you know, based on the existing sidewalk café regulations. It's, it's a happy coincidence that this project is being presented to the Commission at the same time as the important open restaurant text amendment. I, I just want to clarify that the department's review of Starleigh High and Terminal Warehouse project predates the open restaurant program and the zoning proposal you just saw. And because of the timing of the concurrent public review of these separate projects, it's sort of a necessity for Starleigh High and Terminal Warehouse proposal with regards to sidewalk cafes to proceed as is, based on the existing zoning. So just to reiterate, the sidewalk cafes in the existing zoning are currently allowed in the Special West Chelsea District, but only on white streets. So this proposal would additionally allow sidewalk cafes on West Twenty-Seven Street, where new retail activity is planned for both buildings. Next slide, please. So moving on to signage, this is a little technical, so bear with me. So the M-two signage regulations would remain in effect for the entire project area with proposed changes to allow for more design flexibility and visibility in a limited corner zone only. So the applicant proposes a corner zone, which is defined as an area within fifteen feet from the intersection of streetlines, shown on this map with, you know, the blue double line. This essentially covers the building's corners along Eleventh Ave. Because these areas are within five-hundred feet of a commercial district, which is the, the C-district across Eleventh Avenue, the underlying M-two signage regulations currently only permit illuminated signs to be positioned at an angle of more than ninety degrees away from the district boundary line. It also caps the, the height of the signs to, indirectly illuminated signs to fifty-eight feet, which is a lower height allowance than that for non-illuminated signs or signs beyond five-hundred feet of a commercial district. So as you can see, from, you know, the, the, in terms of the angle of the sign, a complying sign based on existing regulations mounted on the chamfer corner of the Starleigh High Building is, is not practical because of the form of the building. The applicant proposes to modify this text, text so that signs can be mounted at an angle that works with the existing building form in, in these corner zones. Secondly, in terms of the height of signs, to enhance the visibility of signage from the surrounding area and, and the high line, the applicants propose to remove the height cap so that indirectly illuminated signs in this corner zone can be mounted up to seven, seventy-five feet above curb level. I'll note that this is the same height as non-illuminated signs and indirectly illuminated signs in areas beyond the five-hundred feet of a commercial district. I'll also note that, you know, while these modified signage regs are proposed in a way that would govern both buildings, Terminal Warehouse is not proposing any signs that would utilize these new provisions. And beyond zoning, all signage would remain the subject of approval by the Landmarks Preservation Commission. Next slide, please. Loading. So under current zoning, new loading berths may be required with changes of uses as in, you know, conversion of existing floor area to addition, to new uses. So the proposed text provides that no new loading would be required for any change of use. This is really informed by, you know, the fact that the anticipated building program would in fact need less loading than than these buildings historically provide because of the heavier kind of industrial nature of these buildings. In twenty-twenty, the applicants commissioned a loading study to address the existing and potential loading needs for, for both buildings. The study concluded that only five loading berths for Terminal Warehouse and eleven berths for Starleigh High would be sufficient to accommodate the current and future potential uses in the building, which are, again, the same or fewer than what exists today. So accordingly, the proposed text eliminates any requirement so that, you know, change of uses pursuant to the, the proposed zoning wouldn't trigger new loading requirements and, and force the applicant to add non, you know, loading areas that are in fact not necessary to the, to the two sites. Next slide, please. So since the Terminal Warehouse is being renovated, all current exterior loading areas would be eliminated. You know, you can see kind of on this image, the, the, the prior conditions. So as part of this consolidation and renovation, five loading berths with a dock master would be incorporated inside the building. Next slide, please. The Starleigh High Building's loading areas were designed and built, you know, a long time ago, and, and as we mentioned, do not comply with the current size and location standards. I'll note that given the landmark status of Starleigh High and, and the fact that there is no planned renovation in the, in the short term, the loading improvements here is a, a bit more constrained. As you can see on this plan image, the building currently has fourteen existing loading areas highlighted in yellow on this plan. Some of them are interior berths, most are in fact exterior spaces, notably blocking the sidewalk of Twenty-Sixth Street. So this is a condition that's been there for a long time. The applicant is actively engaged in discussion with DOT and the community to reduce and improve the existing loading conditions. And these are, these conversations are ongoing. I'll, I'll just note that some of these improvements include, but, but not limited to, reducing the number of active loading berths on the, the, on West Twenty-Sixth Street, the exterior ones, and also limiting the size of trucks, and then increasing birth, births enclosed within the building on Twelfth Avenue and on West Twenty-Seven Street for larger trucks. Next slide, please. A DIS has been prepared for the proposed actions and identified potential for significant, significant impacts only in Transportation Chapter. Mitigation measures are identified in the DIS and will be further explored in the FDIS. Next slide, please. So to summarize, the applicant's proposed zoning map and text amendments to facilitate the long-term adaptive reuse of these two former manufacturing buildings. The applicants assert that extending the Special West Chelsea District to the project area and introducing the wider range of community facility and commercial uses will ensure and support, you know, post-COVID recovery. With sidewalk cafes on Eleventh Avenue, with Twenty-Seven Street, improved retail opportunities, new corner signage, and a rationalized loading program, the applicant seeks to activate and integrate the the project area into the West Chelsea neighborhoods, which we know that has become increasingly mixed-use in the past number of years. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Sylvia. And looking to see if there are questions from Commissioners. Commissioner Bernie.
Not really a question. I just wanted to say, I, I think it's commendable to see a major adaptive reuse of good, solid mid-century building and early, late nineteenth, twentieth century building, and it's a welcome thing and kudos to the developers.
Thank you. Okay, well, with that then, this application is certified.
Thank you.
Great. Before we move on, I just want to revisit the open restaurants. My understanding is that our intention was to refer that application out for ninety days. Do you have that as well?
My indication had been for sixty, but if I, why don't we hold off and confirm it, and we'll come back to the Commissioners?
Okay, yes. All right. So the third item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Queens Community District One. Our presenter is Kathy Ko. I'll note that Commissioner Ramchand is recused on this item.
Thanks. Good afternoon, Commission. Okay, so this is the application for the Thirty-First Street and Hoyt Avenue rezoning. Next slide, please. It's a private application in the Astoria neighborhood of Queens Community District One, and the proposed rezoning area spans the eastern side of three blocks and includes twenty-seven lots along the Thirty-First Street corridor. And within this rezoning area, there are three development sites that would facilitate three new mixed-use buildings containing residential, commercial, and community facility uses. The applicant proposes a zoning map amendment from the existing C-four-three and R-five districts to C-four-five X and C-four-four zoning districts, and a zoning text amendment to establish a mandatory inclusionary housing area to map Option One. Next slide, please. The proposed project area outlined here in red is located in Astoria, and the area is well-served at public transit with the elevated NW subway line running north-south in this part of Astoria along Thirty-First Street. And the Astoria Boulevard Station is located at the southern side of the intersection of Thirty-First Street and Hoyt Avenue. And a half-mile north of the project area is the Dittmars Boulevard Station, which is a terminus for the NNW line. Bus lines in the area include the Q nineteen and the M sixty SBS, which will run along Astoria Boulevard, and the Q sixty-nine line, which runs along Dittmars Boulevard. Astoria Boulevard and Hoyt Avenue are the service road for the Grand Central Parkway, which runs east and west in this part of the borough. Next slide, please. So looking at the area map, the project area was zoned R-five in nineteen sixty-one and was rezoned to the current C-four-three and R-five B zoning districts under the twenty-ten Astoria rezoning. The C-four-three district was established along the Thirty-First Street corridor, generally from Twenty-Eighth Road to the south and Twenty-Third Avenue to the north, to direct opportunities for residential and commercial growth along white streets and near transit resources. The surrounding area consists of a mix of residential, commercial, community facility, and park uses. And northwest and west of the project area is zoned R-five B and R-five D, and is generally developed with two-deep story attached buildings with a C-one-three commercial overlay mapped along the north side of Twenty-Fourth Avenue. East of the project area is mapped with an R-five B district and is generally developed with two-to-three-story attached residences and several four-story multifamily block of buildings. South of the project area along Thirty-First Street is mapped with a C-four-three district and contains local community, I'm sorry, commercial uses, one-to-four-story residences and several six-to-seven-story mixed-use buildings that were built between twenty-sixteen to twenty-nineteen. And west of the C-four-three district is an R-six district, which contains a fifteen-story senior housing building owned and operated by Hennig, and several seven-to-eleven-story residential buildings that were built between two thousand eight to twenty-twelve. Southwest of the project area is mapped with an R-six A district with C-one-three and C-two-three commercial overlays along Astoria Boulevard. And in addition to two-story mixed-use buildings that contain ground-floor retail and residential uses above, there are several six-to-seven-story mixed-use buildings within this district as well. there are several six-to-seven story mixed-use buildings within this district as well. And finally, R five, R six B districts are mapped southeast and southwest of the project area and are generally developed with three-to-four story residential buildings. Next slide, please. And this slide just shows those recent mixed-use developments that I'd mentioned in the previous slide to illustrate that most of the activity within the past years have occurred mostly south of Hoyt Avenue, Astoria Boulevard, on Thirty-First Street, as well as southwest of the project area. Next slide, please. And to take a closer look at the local streets around the project area, Thirty-First Street is a wide one-hundred-foot road with two-way traffic running north and south that include an elevated subway line. Astoria Boulevard North, which turns into Hoyt Avenue northwest of the Thirty-First Street intersection, is a wide one-hundred-and-foot wide street which serves as service road to the Grand Central Parkway. And west of Thirty-First Street, this wide road ends, that's sorry, this road widens to two hundred and eighty feet as it approaches access to the RFK Bridge. Twenty-Fourth Avenue is a wide eighty-foot road with two-way traffic running east and west. Twenty-Fourth Road is a narrow fifty-foot road with two-way traffic running east and west and is located north of the southernmost block within the project area. And Thirty-Second Street is also a narrow road forty feet wide with a with one-way traffic located east of the eastern boundary of the proposed project area with dead-end conditions for vehicular traffic mid-block where there's a grade change, and the street's accessible to the estrands via staircase that aligns with the elevation shift. Next slide, please. And the proposed rezoning area includes numerous lots within three blocks along the Thirty-First Street corridor, which is outlined here in black. There are three proposed development sites, which are outlined in red, and here we see two of the three development sites located in the southern and mid-portion of the proposed rezoning area across two blocks that span from Astoria Boulevard to the south and Twenty-Fourth Avenue to the north. The proposed C four-five X district is bounded by Astoria Boulevard to the south, aligned two hundred feet north of and parallel to Twenty-Fourth Road to the north, Thirty-First Street to the west, and aligned ninety feet from and parallel to Thirty-First Street to the east. Next slide, please. And the third development site is located on the block north of Twenty-Fourth Avenue, and the proposed C four-four district is bounded by a line two hundred feet north of and parallel to Twenty-Fourth Avenue to the north, aligned two hundred feet north, north of and parallel to Twenty-Fourth Road to the south, Thirty-First Street to the west, and aligned ninety feet from and parallel to Thirty-First Street to the east. Next slide, please. And this aerial slide shows a view of the proposed development within the proposed rezoning area. Sorry, the development sites within the proposed rezoning area. And here we see Hoyt Playground directed direct directly west of the development sites one and two, and P S eighty-five is just west of Development Site Three. The fifteen-story Hennig Senior Housing Building is also in view to southwest of the project area, and Astoria Park is approximately a half mile further west of the project area. Next slide, please. And this slide shows views of Development Site One. The blue arrow is a view of the development development site facing north from Astoria Boulevard with the existing Neptune Diner in view. The the photo indicated by the purple arrow is a view facing west from the intersection of Thirty-Second Street and Astoria Boulevard, and here you can see the elevated N W subway line just straight ahead of the Astoria Boulevard Station. And the photo indicated by the green arrow is a view of the development site facing south from Thirty-First Street, and you can see the now newly renovated station entrance directly in front of the site. Next slide, please. And here are just some views as we travel further north on Thirty-First Street. The blue arrow shows a view of Hoyt Avenue facing northwest from Twenty-Fourth Road, which is located directly west of the project area and is a well-utilized amenity in the neighborhood. The purple arrow shows a view facing northeast from Astoria Boulevard with Development Sites one and two in view on the right. And the green arrow shows a view of current residential uses on the eastern side of Thirty-First Street at Twenty-Fourth Road adjacent to Development Site Two. Next slide, please. And here are some views of Development Site Two. The blue arrow indicates a view facing east from the corner of Thirty-First Street and Twenty-Fourth Road, and the development site is currently occupied by Staples. The purple arrow shows a view of Twenty-Fourth Road facing southeast from Thirty-First Street with the development site on the on the right, I'm sorry, on the left. And the green arrow is a view of the the surface parking lot on the development site facing southeast from Thirty-First Street. Next slide, please. And continuing north on Thirty-First Street, the blue arrow is a view of the west side of Thirty-First Street facing northwest from the project area. The purple arrow is a view of Thirty-First Street looking southwest from Twenty-Fourth Avenue, showing the residential and ground floor commercial context of the corridor. And the green arrow is a view of the intersection of Twenty-Fourth Avenue and Thirty-First Street facing north from the project area. Next slide, please. And here we have Development Site Three. The blue arrow shows a view of the site on Thirty-First Street facing northeast from Twenty-Fourth Avenue, with the now vacant Development Site Three on the right. And in view further north is a six-story mixed-use residential and commercial building that was built in two thousand and sixteen. The purple arrow is a view of the development site facing northeast from Thirty-First Street with the adjacent residential uses in view. And the green arrow shows a view of the development site facing south from Thirty-First Street. The building further in the distance is a six-story mixed-use residential and commercial building that was built in two thousand and seventeen on Twenty-Fourth Avenue and Thirty-Second Street. Next slide, please. And the following slides would focus on the proposed development sites, their existing uses, and the proposed conditions. So looking northeast, that proposed development site one from Astoria Boulevard, this aerial view shows the existing uses on Block Eight Thirty-Seven and the development sites approximately and approximately ten thousand square foot corner lot. It's currently developed with a one-story three thousand two hundred and eighty square foot commercial building occupied by the Neptune Diner. And other uses on the block include a surface accessory parking lot to the diner and two residential buildings. There's a curb cut on Thirty-First Street to provide access to the surface parking lot. The applicant owns the lots included in the proposed development site and does not own the lots that are occupied by the residential buildings. And a portion of the block that's eighty feet of Thirty-First Street is mapped in a C four-three district, and the remaining portion beyond eighty feet of Thirty-First Street is mapped R five B, which contain the residential buildings and the small open lot. Next slide, please. The applicant proposes an eleven-story building with a total of approximately sixty thousand two hundred and forty-two square feet at five point nine eight F A R, located within the proposed C four-five X district. The proposed development would consist of approximately forty-six thousand three hundred and ninety-four square feet of residential floor area on floors three through eleven, fifty-one dwelling units, including thirteen affordable units pursuant to M I H option one. It would also contain approximately ten thousand seven hundred and eighty-four square feet of commercial space on the on the ground floor and approximately three thousand square feet of community facility floor area on the second floor, which is intended for a daycare. Next slide, please. The site plan for the proposed development shows a new twelve-foot curb cut from Twenty-Fourth Road, which would provide access to the six enclosed parking spaces in the cellar, and the height at the rear of the building would be reduced to six stories at Astoria Boulevard and further reduced to two stories at Twenty-Fourth Road. And there would be a planting and landscaping area on the southeastern portion of the development site. Next slide, please. Thirty-First Street would provide access to local retail uses on the ground floor, as well as to the residential lobby, and access to commercial office and community facility space on the second floor would be provided on Thirty-First Street and Twenty-Fourth Road. And the entrance to cellar parking would be located on Twenty-Fourth Road with a new twelve-foot curb cut. Next slide, please. And the image on the left is a section of the proposed development from Twenty-Fourth Road, and the image on the right is a section from Astoria Boulevard. The proposed development would set back ten feet at the Thirty-First Street frontage at a base base height of eighty-seven feet at eight stories before rising to a maximum building height of a hundred and seventeen feet. Next slide, please. And here we have an elevation of the proposed development from Twenty-Fourth Road on the left and from Astoria Boulevard on the right. Next slide, please. And this is an illustrative rendering of the proposed development looking northeast from the intersection of Thirty-First Street and Astoria Boulevard. Next slide, please. And here is a view looking north at the illustrative rendering from the southeastern portion of the development site. Next slide, please. And one block north of Development Site One is Development Site Two, which in this view shows from the southern boundary of Twenty-Fourth Road. It consists of Lot Twenty-seven on Block Eight Thirty-Seven, and it's an approximately twenty-nine thousand six hundred and thirty-eight square foot L-shaped corner interior and through lot, and is developed with a one-story twenty-six thousand two hundred and eighty square foot commercial building that's occupied by Staples and a surface parking lot with one curb cut on Thirty-First Street. And this lot is owned by the applicant. The portion of the development site within eighty feet of Thirty-First Street is mapped C four-three, and the remaining portion beyond eighty feet of the Thirty-First of Thirty-First Street is mapped with an R five B district, which is the northeastern portion of the development site. Next slide, please. The applicant proposes a fourteen-story mixed-use building with a total of approximately a hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and twenty-two square feet of floor area located partially within the proposed C four-five X district. The northeastern portion of the development site would remain in the R five B district. And the proposed development would contain a total of approximately a hundred and eighty thousand one hundred and twenty-two square feet of floor area at six point oh seven F A R, and there would be approximately a hundred and sixty-one thousand seven hundred and six square feet of residential floor area on floors two through fourteen, and approximately fourteen thousand four hundred and fifty-six square feet of commercial use, and approximately three thousand nine hundred and sixty-two square feet of community facilities on the ground floor. And the applicant proposes a senior center to be located in the community facility space. There would be a hundred and sixty-one new dwelling units, including forty criminal permanently affordable units under option one, and a new curb cut on Thirty-First Street would provide access to sixty-one parking spaces provided. Next slide, please. And this ground floor site plan shows commercial use on the ground floor and and community facility use, which is intended for a senior center. The roof of the accessory parking in the rear portion of the building is intended to be used for for open space for seniors, and the applicant intends to work with Hennig to operate the senior center. Local retail use would be accessed via Twenty-Fourth Road and Thirty-First Street entrances, and residential and community facility uses would be accessed by entrance entrances on Thirty-First Street. A new twenty-two-foot curb cut on Thirty-First Street would provide access to fifty-two parking spaces in the cellar, and there would be nine enclosed spaces on the ground floor. Next slide, please. And on this proposed site plan, you can see that the building would have a height of a hundred and forty-five feet with the height of the building fronting Thirty-First Street to be further reduced to seven stories towards the northern portion of the development site, and the height of the building fronting Twenty-Fourth Road would be would be reduced to six stories in the rear. Next slide, please. The section shows a ten-foot setback at a base height of eighty-five feet before rising to a maximum height of a hundred and forty-five feet with a one-story roof in the rear of the building. Next slide, please. And there would be a fifteen-foot setback on the Twenty-Fourth Road frontage at a base height of eighty-five feet, and the northernmost end of the building would be reduced to seven stories. Next slide, please. And here we have an elevation of the proposed building from Twenty-Fourth Road, where the rear of the building is reduced to six stories at sixty-five feet. Next slide, please. And here we have an illustrative rendering of the proposed development looking east from Thirty-First Street. Next slide, please. And this rendering of Development Site Two shows a ground floor corner view looking northeast from the intersection of Thirty-First Street and Twenty-Fourth Road. Next slide, please. And this illustrative rendering shows a view of the proposed development on the left with a view of the ground floor facing south on Thirty-First Street. Next slide, please. And this aerial view is looking east from Thirty-First Street at Development Site Three. It's an approximately thirteen thousand five hundred square foot interior lot located mid-block between Twenty-Fourth Avenue and Twenty-Third Road within the existing C four-three district with approximately a hundred and fifty feet of frontage on on Thirty-First Street. The site was cleared in late two thousand and nineteen and is currently vacant and owned by the applicant. Next slide, please. And the applicant proposes an eleven-story building totaling approximately eighty thousand seventy-six square feet at five point nine three F A R. It contained approximately fifty-nine thousand five hundred and seventy-nine square feet of residential floor area on floors four through eleven, approximately seven thousand five hundred and forty-eight square feet of commercial use on the ground floor, and approximately thirteen thousand square feet of community facility use on the on the first, sorry, the cellar first and third floors. It would contain approximately seventy-five new dwelling units, of which nineteen would be meaning permanently affordable that M I H option one, and there would be nineteen parking spaces available on the second floor. Next slide, please. And the site plan for Development Site Three shows an eleven-story building above a base height at seven stories and a new twenty-foot curb cut on Thirty-First Street. The proposed building would continue to step down to one story in height towards the rear. Next slide, please. So community facility space would occupy the cellar, which is a site plan here, which is intended for a youth center to be operated by Hennig. Hennig intends to utilize the space for a range of programming, and that includes recreational and health and fitness activities, literacy, homework assistance, employment training, and more. The seller site plan shows a stairwell and elevator access, and you'll see in the following slides that they continue to provide access to the third floor community facility space, but not into the residential uses on the fourth floor and beyond. Next slide, please. And here the ground force floor site plan shows access to retail use located on the southern portion of the development site and access to community facility and residential uses on the north on the northern end. And the new twenty-foot curb cut would provide access to parking spaces to be located on the second floor. Next slide, please. And here we have the proposed layout for accessory parking on the second floor to contain nineteen spaces. Next slide, please. And the third floor would be comprised entirely of community facility use with space for the residential bank, elevator banking stairs. Next slide, please. The building would rise to a base height of seventy-four feet at seven stories, setback ten feet, and then rise to a maximum building height of approximately a hundred and eighteen feet. Next slide, please. And here we have an illustrative rendering of the proposed development looking southeast from thirty, northeast, sorry, from Thirty-First Street. Next slide, please. So to facilitate these developments, the applicant proposes two actions, one of which is a zoning map amendment, and the proposed C four-five X district is bounded by a line two hundred feet north of and parallel to Twenty-Fourth Road to the north, Astoria Boulevard to the south, Thirty-First Street to the west, and aligned ninety feet from and parallel to Thirty-First Street to the east. The southern portion of this rezoning boundary is adjacent to multiple wide streets and the Astoria Boulevard subway station. The northern portion of the proposed rezoning boundary is the proposed C four-four district founded by a line two hundred feet north of and parallel to Twenty-Fourth Avenue to the north, aligned two hundred feet north of and parallel to Twenty-Fourth Road to the south, Thirty-First Street to the west, and aligned ninety feet from and parallel to Thirty-First Street to the east. Next slide, please. And this proposed zoning change offers an increase to residential community, community facility and commercial F A R and increases the maximum building heights to a hundred and thirty-five feet within the proposed C four-four district since the project area is located within a hundred and fifty feet of the elevated rail line and a hundred and forty-five feet in the C four-five X district. And according to the applicant, these increases in F A R are appropriate because of its close proximity to public transit and location along wide streets, and the increase in height is comparable to the thirteen stories that would be permitted in and as of right height factor development under the current C four-three zoning, which is an R six equivalent. And the highest density on the proposed development sites are located close to transit resources and wide streets, while the development sites step down in height further north. Next slide, please. The applicant also proposes a zoning text amendment to map option one to be conterminous with the project area. In two thousand and nineteen, this area was mapped with M I H option one, as you can see, south of the project area here. And the shaded area with the hashtag symbol is the proposed M I H area. The A M I for C B one is approximately sixty-four thousand, and the A M I for this part of Astoria is approximately eighty-one thousand five hundred and ninety-six. And this disparity in A M Is highlights the need to stretch portable housing resources for households with lower incomes across the district. Next slide, please. And here we have an aerial rendering looking east at all three development sites. Next slide, please. In summary, the applicant requests a zoning map amendment to change the existing R five B and C four-three zoning districts to C four-four and C four-five X districts along the Thirty-First Street corridor, generally between Astoria Boulevard and two hundred feet north of Twenty-Fourth Avenue, as well as a zoning text amendment to establish an M I H area. These actions would facilitate the development of three new mixed-use buildings, providing commercial, unit, community facility, and residential uses, and there would be a total of approximately two hundred and eighty-seven new dwelling units, of which seventy-two would be permanently affordable under M I H option one, and new community facilities spaces, including a daycare, a senior center, and a youth center would be provided, along with ground floor local retail uses. That concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Knuckles.
Thank you for the presentation. It's very clear. My question is, I've been having audio lapses, not only during this presentation, but in the earlier ones, and I'm just wondering, am I the only one?
I have not had them.
I've been, I've been okay.
Yeah, I've been okay.
All right. Maybe it's my tablet. I mean, I had my, I'm not using the laptop because I couldn't make the connection today because it's been off for two weeks. All right. Thank you.
Right? Would you want to ask Soki to reach out to the vice chair to see if we can help with that?
Sure, we can get someone to help, help with that. Saki's out, but we have some folks who can do that.
Thank you.
Commissioner Levin.
Yeah, at this point, I don't have so much of a question, but a, you know, kind of a raised eyebrow and particularly about the density that's proposed here. You know, it's essentially a doubling of the permitted density. And maybe we've got another example of an upzoning and for the sake of affordable housing, which, you know, affordable housing is something we have to produce here. But this is a pretty dramatic change of scale for this neighborhood. And it looks like there are going to be some shadow impacts on the park that are not insignificant. And there's also a projected fourth development site between sites 2 and 3 that's not controlled by the applicant and not proposed by, for development, but studied in the EIS as not just a, maybe it might happen sometime, but as a projected development site. So I think we have to keep our eye on the impacts that that would have. There, the EIS indicates, or my notes here, that there are now 22 dwelling units there that could be at risk. So, all of this is sort of what I'm going to be listening to in the public review. Curious to know what the community makes of this and what the borough president has to say. And I'm not going to say anything more until I hear how this goes down locally. But those are the issues I'm concerned about here.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other comments? Well, then, I will channel my, my inner Commissioner Marine and Commissioner Burney, who frequently make architectural observations. To note that on site 3, the provision of second floor, what appears to be unscreened parking, is not something that the rezoning would control, but certainly jumped out at me and looking at the, the program for the building and would hope the applicant would take that into consideration. Commissioner Burney.
Yeah, actually, well noted. I was actually keeping my powder dry for the hearing when the architects will be there. But it's also notable that the, on site 3, the whole building is rather inconsistent with the other two. And I'm just wondering what happened there, if they've got a different architect or... And I do think, I agree with you. I think building 3, the, the third site could take a bit of additional consideration.
Sure. It is not a different architect. It is the same. The seller, normally, the other two development sites, the parking is generally located on the cellar, which, with the exception of development site 2, some of the parking spaces on the ground floor. The cellar space for development site 3 was determined to be too small to accommodate parking. And, you know, as such, it's on the second floor. And the applicant has described using kind of metal paneling, a screening, and I'll, I'll make sure that they're able to speak to that a little bit more and provide some visuals when this comes back.
Okay. They've also got some of Commissioner Marine's favorite colored brickwork, which they may want to think about again.
Noted.
Thank you. And not seeing other hands raised, this application is certified.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we want to revisit item 1 for the referral number of days?
I'm sorry for the confusion about the length of the referral period for the open restaurants. While it is not a ULP item, it's a non-ULP text amendment. Were it a ULP item, because we are in June, under the most recent charter revision, the referral would have been for 90 days. And so we thought it appropriate to refer this for 90 days rather than 60 days. Sorry for the confusion.
Sorry about that. And I saw a thumbs up from, from Commissioner Levin, so. Okay. The fourth item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District 1. Our presenter is Alexander Patty Diaz.
Good afternoon.
Oh, sorry, Catherine, I'm so sorry.
No, that's okay. She's, she's the, the alternate.
Yeah. Sorry, Catherine. It's Catherine.
This is a private application by Key Plaza LLC for a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment at 79 Key Street in Greenpoint Community District 1, Brooklyn. Next slide, please. The project area includes one full lot, the proposed development site at 79 Key Street, and two partial lots. The proposed actions include a rezoning from M12R6A in the special mixed-use district MX8 to M14R7D, the special mixed-use district MX8, and a zoning text amendment to section 123 of the zoning resolution, adding R7D to the designated residence districts for MX8 and to appendix F to map a new mandatory inclusionary housing area. This would facilitate the construction of a new nine-story mixed-use building with an FAR of 5.58, and the building would be approximately 92,000 square feet. Next slide, please. And here we see the surrounding area with the project area outlined in yellow and the development site outlined in red. The surrounding area is characterized by a mix of multifamily residential buildings, mixed-use buildings, industrial buildings, and vacant land. Industrial buildings ranging from one to three stories are generally south of the project area. Multifamily residential buildings ranging from two to seven stories are generally north of the project area. The project area is also within the transit zone and well-served by public transportation. The Greenpoint and Nassau Avenue G-line subway stations are both about a half mile from the project area. Nearby bus routes include the B32 connecting Williamsburg and Long Island City, the B62 connecting downtown Brooklyn and Long Island City, and the B43 connecting Greenpoint and Prospect Lefferts Gardens. Next slide, please. The project area is within the 2005 Greenpoint-Williamsburg rezoning area shown here in green and was rezoned at that time from M11 to M12R6A. The Greenpoint-Williamsburg rezoning sought to facilitate housing, open space, light industry, and commercial uses along two miles of Brooklyn's East River waterfront and the adjoining Upland neighborhoods. The 2009 Greenpoint-Williamsburg rezoning area is also shown here in blue. And nearby, there have been a few recent land use actions, including the Acme Smoked Fish Gem Street rezoning, which included zoning map amendment, special permit, a zoning text amendment, and special permits at 12 Franklin Street, and a waterfront certification at 2147 West Street. Next slide, please. Zoning districts mapped in the surrounding area include R8, R6, M11, M31, and M12R6B. The project area is within an M12R6A district. C24 commercial overlays are mapped along Franklin Street and West Street, and the surrounding area is within the MX8 special mixed-use district. R6 and R8 are medium-density, non-contextual residential districts governed by height factor regulations. The FAR in R6 ranges from zero point, maximum FAR ranges from 0.78 for a single-story building to 2.43 at a typical height of 13 stories. R8 districts have a maximum FAR ranging from 0.94 to 6.02 with an open space ratio ranging from 5.9 to 11.9. R6A and R6B are medium-density contextual districts where quality housing regulations are mandatory. The maximum residential FAR in an R6A district is 3.0 or 3.6 with inclusionary housing. The maximum residential FAR in an R6B district is 2.0 or 2.2 with inclusionary housing. M11 and M12 are low-density manufacturing districts typically characterized by light manufacturing and warehouse uses. The maximum manufacturing FAR in M11 districts is 1.0, and in M12 districts, 2.0. The special mixed-use district, or the MX district, is mapped in neighborhoods throughout the city with mixed residential and industrial uses in close proximity. New residential and non-residential uses, including commercial, community facility, and light industrial, can be developed as a bright and be located side by side or within the same building. In the MX districts, an M1 district is paired with residential district ranging from R3 to R10. Next slide, please. And here we can see some photos of the proposed project area, which includes one full lot and two partial lots on the north side of Key Street between West Street and Franklin Street. 85 Key Street is approximately 6,000 square feet, and it currently has a three-four, three-story multifamily building with six dwelling units. 93 Key Street is a lot of approximately 18,000 square feet and currently has an industrial facility which consists of a photography studio. Next slide, please. And here we have some photos of the proposed development site. So, this is one tax lot of approximately 16,500 square feet. There are about 100 feet of frontage on West Street and 165 feet of frontage on Key Street. Existing uses include an interior decorating studio, a furniture studio, a rock climbing gym, and the building also has two vacant residential dwelling units. Next slide, please. The proposed development is a new nine-story residential and commercial building, about 92,000 square feet and a 5.58 FAR. The proposed building would reach a maximum height of 101 feet and a base height of 67 feet. The ground floor would contain about 10,000 square feet of retail, and the remaining square footage of the building would be residential with 83 total units. Between 21 and 25 of those would be affordable pursuant to MIH. There would be 29 parking spaces provided in the cellar and 42 bicycle parking spaces. Next slide, please. The proposed zoning map amendment would change the existing M12R6A district to an M14R7D, still within the MX8 special mixed-use district. R7D districts are medium-density contextual residential districts with a maximum FAR of 4.2 or 5.6 with inclusionary housing. Parking is required for 50% of dwelling units and typically for 15% of income-restricted housing units. However, this parking requirement is modified by the transit zone. In developments constructed after March 2016, no parking is required for income-restricted housing units. M14 districts have a maximum manufacturing FAR of 2.0. Next slide, please. The proposed text amendment would modify appendix F of the zoning resolution to create a new MIH area. The applicant proposes to map options 1 and 2 for maximum flexibility here, and they plan to work with the council member and community board to determine the level of affordability. The zoning text amendment would also modify section 123 of the zoning resolution, adding R7D to the list of designated residence districts that can be used in the MX8 special mixed-use district. Next slide, please. So, to conclude, this zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment would facilitate a new nine-story residential and commercial building at 79 Key Street in Greenpoint, Brooklyn, Community District 1. And I can answer your questions.
Thank you, Catherine. Questions from the commissioner? Commissioner Romper shop.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. I was going through our package. I didn't see any floor plans. Is it possible to get floor plans to the building? Also, the breakdown of the bedroom count, and if possible, additional rendering views from West Street?
Sure. We have some floor plans, floor plans, and I can have the applicant address all of that and show those to you.
Thank you. Oh, one other question. I saw there, there was a range between 21 to 25 with the affordability. Is there a reason why they haven't specified the exact amount?
I believe it's because they, they plan on working with the community board one and with the council member to determine exactly what level of affordability. They haven't decided whether they'll be using option 1 or 2 yet.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Okay, the application is certified.
Thank you.
The fifth item on our agenda is a certification of a special permit, zoning map, and zoning text amendments. UW designation and disposition of city-owned property in Brooklyn Community District 1. Our presenter is Sayad Alman.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is Sayad Alman, Senior Project Manager from Brooklyn Office. The Cooper Park Commons is an application by the Department of Housing Preservation and Development and Maspath Managers LLC, requesting several land use actions to facilitate a mixed-use development consisting of 553 units of permanently affordable housing and replacement of a 200-bed homeless shelter at the former Greenpoint Hospital site in Greenpoint Community District 1, Brooklyn. Next slide, please. The 4.5-acre site is half a mile east of BQE and just north of Brooklyn, north of Metropolitan Avenue. It consists of an entire city block bounded by three wide streets and occupied by several structures and vacant land. Next slide, please. At the southeast corner of the project area, number one is a four-story vacant nurses residence. It was built in 1932 and closed in 1982 with the closure of the Greenpoint Hospital. This building will be renovated to accommodate a 200-bed homeless shelter now housed in the main hospital building. Number two on this slide is a large piece of vacant land fronting on Maspath Avenue that is slated for a new 12- to 18-story mixed-use building. At the southwest corner of the site, number three is a two-story former outpatient building. In 2006, this building was converted into a community center and administrative offices for Saint Nick's Alliance, a neighborhood community service provider and housing advocacy group. This building will remain as-is. In the middle of the site, east-west, Skilman Avenue was demapped in 1953 and is now part of the project area. Number four is the main Greenpoint Hospital building that was built in 1915. The hospital was closed in 1982. Two years later, the building was repurposed to accommodate a 200-bed shelter for homeless known as Barbara Kryman residence. Number five is the former power, power plant that is attached to the main hospital building. Sorry, yes. That is attached to the main hospital building and now serves as a laundry facility operated by the Department of Homeless Services. This building will be demolished to make room for a new 14-story residential building. Finally, number six, at the northwest and northeast corners, are four privately-owned three-story buildings that were converted to residential use with 45 apartments. In 1991, these buildings and the parcels which they occupy were subdivided and conveyed to an affordable housing developer. The land disposition agreement stipulated those 45 apartments in four buildings will remain affordable until 2078. In 2017, HPD issued a request for expression of interest for the redevelopment of the Greenpoint Hospital site. The RFEI invited proposals for the design and construction of high-quality, affordable housing development for the hospital site and promoted the goals of Mayor's Housing Plan, Housing New York Plan. Next slide, please. This surrounding area is developed with variety of land uses. Directly north and east is Nige's Cooper Park Houses occupying a 12-acre L-shaped city block. Cooper Park Houses consists, consists of 11 eight-story buildings with 700 apartments. The blocks further to the east and north of Cooper Park Houses are predominantly developed with industrial uses and are part of North Brooklyn IBC. The IBC area has a significant number of jobs in manufacturing, wholesale, transportation, construction, waste management, and motion picture production. The IBC area is zone M11 and M31. That permit industrial uses at an FAR of 1 and 2 respectively with high parking requirements. The residential blocks west and south of the project area contain 1 to 4 fam, 1 to 2 family homes and new 4- to 7-story apartment buildings with ground floor commercial uses. This area was rezoned in 2009 as part of Greenpoint-Williamsburg rezoning to R6A and R6B contextual districts. The two contextual districts permit seven-story buildings at an FAR of 3 and five-story buildings at an. and five-story buildings at an FAR of two respectively. To the south of the project area is six-point-four-acre New York City Public Park. The Cooper Park contains tennis courts, children's play area, large lawn, and a dog run. Next slide. The project area is well-served by mass transit. The Graham Avenue Station on L line is four blocks to the west of the site. The B twenty-four bus runs along Kingsland Avenue connecting the project area to Sunnyside Queens and to Marcy Avenue stations on JM and Z line near the Williamsburg Bridge. The B forty-three bus runs north-south along Graham Avenue from Greenpoint to Crown Heights. Next slide. The proposed development would consist of four buildings. Two existing buildings would be renovated and two new buildings would be constructed on the site. Next slide. Building one, the four-story nurses' residence outlined in red and shown below in a picture, has been vacant since nineteen eighty-two. This building will be renovated and enlarged to accommodate a newly-designed two-hundred-bed homeless shelter, which is now housed in the old Greenpoint Hospital building. The one-story enlargement with a basement will accommodate administrative offices, a medical clinic, office for social services, room for occupational therapy, and a job center. The roof of the one-story addition will be furnished with planters and seating and will provide an open terrace for residents. Building's new entrance on Skilman Avenue will have an ADA-compliant ramp for access. Next slide, please. A new twelve-to-eighteen-story building will be constructed in the vacant space fronting on Masbeth Avenue. It will contain three hundred and ten affordable units plus one unit for the superintendent. The building will also have eight thousand eight hundred and thirty-four square foot space for a health clinic and a two thousand sixty-four square foot area for a cafe. The building will provide a laundry room, children's playroom, fitness room, tenant's lounge, rooftop terrace, and enclosed parking for one hundred and fifty-six bicycles. In addition, at the back of the building, fronting on Skilman Avenue, a four thousand one hundred and fourteen square foot private courtyard will provide passive open space for the residents of the building. Next slide. The main hospital building in the middle of the site with green roof will be enlarged by adding twenty-one thousand square feet and will be converted to provide one hundred and seven affordable apartments for seniors plus one unit for superintendent. The amenities in the building will include a tenant's lounge, fitness room, laundry room, social service offices, and enclosed parking for eleven bicycles. Next slide. The former power plant north of main hospital building outlined in red will be demolished, and in its place, a new fourteen-story building will be built. The new building will have one hundred and thirty-six affordable apartments plus one unit for the superintendent. The building will provide five thousand three hundred and eighteen square feet of ground-floor space for a senior center. And the amenities will include a laundry room, fitness room, children's playroom, tenant's lounge, and enclosed parking for sixty-nine bicycles. Next slide. The proposed development will include a landscaping plan for the site. The landscaped areas outlined in red would comprise approximately half of the development site, of which seventy thousand six hundred and fifty square feet would be public open spaces with plantings, seating, and permeable pavement. The twenty thousand square feet of private open space shown in green boxes will consist of two areas, a four thousand one hundred and fourteen square feet courtyard in the back of building two and a sixteen thousand one hundred and eighty-six square feet courtyard located north of building three and east of building four, providing passive open space to the tenants. The proposed landscaping plan would reintegrate the Greenpoint Hospital site with the surrounding neighborhood. The former Skilman Avenue will became a landscaped public plaza shared by pedestrians crossing the site to reach Cooper Park Houses. Next slide. This rendering shows a westward view of former Skilman Avenue in front of the Greenpoint Hospital building. Next slide. This rendering shows the plaza between building one and two from Masbeth Avenue looking towards the Greenpoint Hospital building. Next slide. The public open spaces will be developed in four phases as the proposed residential development. Four phases are shown here on this slide divided by red lines. Phase one will involve the enlargement and conversion of the former nurses' residence to a two-hundred-bed shelter for homeless and the completion of ten thousand eight hundred and sixty square feet of open space associated with this phase. Phase two will include the construction of new twelve-to-eighteen-story mixed-use building with three hundred and ten affordable apartments and the completion of twenty-four thousand eight hundred and sixty, eight hundred and seventy-nine square feet of open space. Phase three will include the enlargement and renovation of Greenpoint Hospital building with one hundred and seven apartments for seniors and the completion of twenty-nine thousand nine hundred and eight square feet of open space. Phase four will include the construction of a new fourteen-story building fronting on Jackson Avenue with one hundred and thirty-six affordable apartments and the completion of five thousand three square feet of open space. Next slide. The actions necessary to facilitate the proposed mixed-use development are a zoning map amendment from R six to an R seven-two and R seven-two six-two-four district, a zoning text amendment to designate the project area and MIH area, a special permit to establish a large-scale general development pursuant to zoning resolution section seventy-four seven forty-three, an urban development action area designation, and urban development action area project approval and disposition of development site lot one, and finally, a disposition approval to modify the use restrictions on lot ten. Next slide. The applicant requests a zoning map amendment for the entire project area from an R six to an R seven-two district with a C two-four overlay mapped within one hundred and fifty feet of Masbeth Avenue. Next slide. The proposed R seven-two district with an MIH area would permit residential uses up to an FAR of four point six and community facility uses up to an FAR of six point five. The maximum base height in R seven-two district is seventy-five feet, and the maximum building height is one hundred and thirty-five feet. The C two-four commercial overlay permits commercial uses at an FAR of two. The proposed mixed-use development would have an FAR of three point nine five, which is greater than what the existing R six district would have permitted, but is less than the four point six FAR permitted in the proposed R seven-two district. No parking is required for affordable units in a transit zone, and none is provided except fourteen spaces for the staff. The applicant proposes a zoning text amendment to Appendix F to establish the project area as an MIH area choosing option one and two. However, all the proposed five hundred and fifty-three units on the site would be permanently affordable. Next slide. The applicant seeks a special permit for bulk modification for a large-scale general development pursuant to Section seventy-four seven forty-three to promote better site planning and urban design on the development site. Requested waivers are to modify building heights and setback requirements pursuant to Section twenty-three six sixty-four C and to modify the minimum distance requirement between buildings pursuant to Section twenty-three seven eleven. Next slide. This slide shows height waivers for building two and minimum distance waivers between buildings two and one. The tower portion of building two fronting on Masbeth Avenue rises to eighteen stories or to a height of two hundred and seven feet, exceeding the permitted height of one hundred and thirty-five feet in R seven-two district. The proposed eighteen-story portion also exceeds the maximum permitted limit of thirteen stories. The minimum distance required, the minimum required distance. Can we go back to? Yes, thank you. The minimum required distance between buildings two and one is shown by blue arrow. The eastern facade of building two is forty-three feet, nine inches from building one, instead of required fifty feet, and at another location is only fifty-five feet apart where it is required to be sixty feet. Next slide, please. This slide shows height waiver for building four. The new building four fronting on Jackson Avenue will rise to a maximum building height of one hundred and sixty-six feet or fourteen stories and will exceed both the maximum building height of one hundred and thirty-five feet and maximum permitted limit of thirteen stories. Next slide, please. This slide shows the setback waivers for buildings two and four. Building four will rise to one hundred and sixty-six feet without providing a ten-foot setback at the base height of seventy-five feet. And building two will rise to one hundred and forty-seven feet and two hundred and seven feet without providing a ten-foot setback at the base height of seventy-five feet. Next slide, please. This slide shows the minimum distance waivers between buildings. Building four's west-facing windows are thirty feet, two inches from the wall portion of three-story building six instead of required fifty feet. Additionally, the eastern facade of building four is nine feet, four inches from adjacent building seven instead of required forty feet. If buildings four and seven were on separate zoning lots, the required distance would have been eight feet because there are no windows on each lot line. Next slide, please. The applicant requests an urban development action area designation and Udap approval and the disposition of development site lot one shown here in green hatched lines to be conveyed to a sponsor selected by HPD. Next slide. Lastly, HPD is seeking a disposition approval for lot ten at the southwest corner of the project site outlined in blue. This two-story building on that lot is used as a community service center and houses administrative offices of Saint Nick's Alliance. The proposed disposition of this lot would lift the use restriction on lot ten from a specific healthcare facility to a general community facility. The broadening of the use category to the community facility will better meet the variety of community needs that currently exist and are anticipated to remain in the future. In conclusion, the applicants are seeking approvals for several land use actions to facilitate the redevelopment of a large, underutilized city-owned site with much-needed affordable housing and provide a new appropriately-designed two-hundred-bed shelter for homeless. The proposed large-scale general development would facilitate the provision of substantial portion of the site as landscaped public open space that will reintegrate the former hospital campus with the surrounding neighborhood. The approval of the proposed action will also further Mayor's Housing New York Plan. Thank you. That concludes my presentation, and I will take the questions.
Thank you, Sayad, for such a clear presentation of a complex web of different actions. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Bernie?
Thank you, Chair. You know, I think there are a lot of commendable things about this project. Adaptive reuse of some of the existing buildings, what looks like a thoughtful public open space plan. So a lot of good things. I just have a problem with building number two, the twelve-to-eighteen story. And, you know, it's just a sort of overwhelmingly bulky building. You know, when Cooper Park Houses looks more elegant than your building, then you know you've got a problem. And I just wonder whether the architects might not think about, in exchange for the heightened setback waiver, which I understand, there might be some articulation to the facade that would break down some of that bulk as it faces, I forget what that street is now, but. Yeah, so maybe when it comes back, we can have a conversation about that.
By the way, Masbeth Avenue is a wide avenue. It is ninety feet wide. And there is, there is a very wide space, a sidewalk, which will front the building. It is almost thirty foot wide. So that would provide, and that space would be landscaped with two rows of trees and plantings and seats, you know. So it is a little bit setback from Masbeth Avenue.
Which I think is why the heightened setback waves are probably, you know, probably okay. But I would like to see some other articulation in the facade. Just to break down the sort of overwhelming bulk of it, I think it would make a more elegant building without having to give up any of the FAR.
We can certainly ask the HPD applicant team to include the architect when this item comes back to hearing and to speak to that.
Yeah, and you can work on him in the meantime, Winston, okay?
Be happy to convey that message from you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Not seeing any other hands, this application is certified, so we can move on to our last item for certification.
Let's write. The sixth item on our agenda is a certification of a zoning map and zoning text amendments in Brooklyn Community District Three. Our presenter is Jesse Hirakawa.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is an application by Atlantic Brooklyn LLC for a zoning map amendment from M one-one district to a C six-three A district and zoning text amendments to map an MIH area and allow street wall location flexibility in order to facilitate a seventeen-story mixed-use development with four hundred and twenty-six dwelling units, one hundred and twenty-six of which would be affordable, approximately thirty-three thousand square feet of retail, and approximately thirty-six thousand square feet of commercial office space. Next slide. The project area is located in the Bedford-Stuyvesant neighborhood of Brooklyn Community District Three and situated on the north side of Atlantic Avenue, which is the border between Community District Three and Eight of Crown Heights. Next slide. The project area, I'm sorry, the area surrounding the project area is characterized by a variety of uses from industrial, commercial, residential, transportation, utility, and community facility land uses. The project area is located in an M one-one district and sits within an area-wide neighborhood framework called M Crown, which extends from Northrend Avenue to the east and Vanderbilt Avenue to the west. M one-one is a low-density manufacturing district that permits industrial and commercial uses up to one FAR and certain community facility uses up to two point four FAR. Buildings in an M one-one district may have a street wall of up to thirty feet, after which heights are governed by the sky exposure plane. M one-one districts also have high parking requirements, requiring one space per three hundred square feet of office or retail and one space per one thousand square feet of industrial use. The area to the north of this project area was contextually rezoned in two thousand and seven as part of the Bedside South rezoning that mapped R six B and R seventy C two-four to preserve neighborhood scale and character while allowing for residential growth and facilitate affordable housing along Fulton Street and the transit corridors. Real quickly, R six B is a medium contextual residential zoning district that allows for a maximum FAR of two with a maximum building height of fifty-five feet or five floors. The R seventy C two-four district is also a medium-density contextual district along Fulton Street and within a voluntary inclusionary housing area, which allows residential use at a five point six FAR with a maximum building height of one hundred and fifteen feet or eleven floors. If the commission recalls, there were two private applications that were adopted in two thousand and nineteen during the lower left-hand corner, known as ten-ten Pacific and ten-fifty Pacific Street, around the intersections of Classen and Pacific, which rezoned the M one-one district to an R seven A C two-four at ten-ten Pacific and an M one-one to the MX district, which was an M one-four R seven A at the ten-fifty Pacific. Lastly, to the west, beyond Classen Avenue, was also contextually rezoned in two thousand and seven as part of the Fort Greene-Fenton Hill rezoning, which mapped R six B and R seven A with commercial overlay along Atlantic Avenue and Fulton Street to accommodate modest growth. R seven A district along Atlantic Avenue is also within a voluntary inclusionary housing area and allows a residential FAR of four point six and a building height of ninety to ninety or ninety-five feet with quality ground floor. Next slide. Here's a view from the bird's eye perspective, looking northwest at the development site, which is shaded in red. This segment of Atlantic Avenue was classified as a wide street at one hundred and twenty-five, at one hundred and twenty feet in width, while Classen and Franklin Avenue are both one-way narrow streets. Atlantic Avenue serves as a major east Atlantic Avenue serves as a major east-west arterial that connects downtown Brooklyn with Queens and is also a designated truck route by DOT. The area surrounding the project area has a variety of building types and forms. The buildings found along Atlantic Avenue in the surrounding area are predominantly non-residential in use as industrial, commercial, and some mixed-use buildings are present, rising between one and two stories. The buildings found to the north of the project area along Lefferts Place and Brever Place are predominantly residential with one and two family homes and apartment buildings with building heights ranging from two to four stories. Further north, along Atlantic Avenue, the area transitions back to commercial, community facility, and mixed-use buildings with the built form between three and ten stories with a high concentration of ground floor commercial uses such as eating and drinking establishments, medical facilities, beauty salons, convenience stores, and pharmacies, um, and hardware stores. The area is well-served by public transit and within a transit zone. Two blocks to the north, the Franklin Avenue subway station provides access to the C-line. And just adjacent to the site, you'll notice the elevated S shuttle, which has a station around the corner. The B twenty-five, B twenty-six, B forty-eight, and B forty-nine are also all accessible within a couple of blocks. There's also a city bike station on Lefferts Place at Franklin Avenue, one block in the rear. The development site consists of four buildings, which we will get into more, uh, we'll get into more later. The rest of the block to the west consists of a few active one-story automobile use buildings and one restaurant equipment, um, sales supply store. Next slide. The project area consists of a mid-block portion, a block twenty-twenty, fronting on the northern side of Atlantic Avenue. Due to the irregular depth of tax lots on this block, several lots are split between the M one-one and R six B districts. The project area consists of the M one-one area of these lots. The proposed development site is an irregular-shaped zoning lot with approximately three hundred and seventy feet of frontage along Atlantic Avenue, consisting of lots sixty-eight, seventy, seventy-three, seventy-four, and seventy-seven, with a combined lot area of approximately forty-six thousand square feet and all of which are under the applicant ownership. Next slide. Starting on the east is Lot sixty-eight, which is, which is currently occupied by a two-story automotive use building with an auto body shop on the bottom, which plans to vacate by the end of the year. Lot seventy is currently occupied by a two-story vacant warehouse building. In the lower-left photo, directly east of Lot sixty-eight, you'll notice the elevated S shuttle under, under the, uh, the York Transit Authority. Next slide. Continuing to move west along the development site, Lot seventy-three is a vacant lot that was utilized as an open area for the, for an eating and drinking establishment located on Lot seventy-four, which is improved with a single-story building with two uses. The western side has a commissary kitchen and the eastern side contains an eating and drinking establishment called the Diamond Reef, which made a business decision a few months ago to vacate. Lot seventy-seven is improved with the, with two single-story buildings of commercial office space and industrial uses as a plumbing and heating supply store, and their lease ends in August. Next slide. The applicant proposes a seventeen-story mixed-use building totaling approximately three hundred and ninety-seven thousand square feet or eight-point-five FAR comprised of four hundred and twenty-six dwelling units, one hundred and twenty-six of which will be affordable, as well as approximately thirty-three thousand square feet of commercial retail on the ground floor and approximately thirty-six thousand square feet of office space on the second floor. The proposed development would include a twelve-story base with a height of approximately a hundred and twenty-five feet. After the base, the building would set back ten feet before reaching a height of seventeen stories or a hundred and seventy-five feet. You'll also notice that in the rear top area of the tower of the building um, has been carved into. The applicant has stated they've done solar carving into the building, into the proposed building to provide adequate light and air to the adjacent row houses along Lefferts Place in the rear. Next slide. This is the view from the southeast looking down Atlantic Avenue as it heads towards downtown Brooklyn. You'll notice in the bottom left, the Twenty-third Regiment Armory Bedford Atlantic Shelter in the bottom of the rendering. Um, also, you'll, you'll see the adjacent elevated S shuttle that runs in front of it. Next slide. This is, this is a view of the proposed development from the rear along Brever Place, approximately one block to the northeast, where you can also see that the corner of the building was solar carved into as well. Next slide. This is an illustrative site plan where you can see that the applicant has proposed an approximately three-foot setback along Atlantic Avenue that's highlighted in red to provide more sidewalk space. In addition, the curb cut and entrance ramp to a hundred and fifty-two space accessory parking area in the building cellar is located on the right side. In the rear, you'll also notice a twenty-by-a-hundred-and-eighty-feet-in-width area, which is also in the R six B portion of the site on the rear and consists of open landscape upgrade. In addition, rooftop, in addition, the applicant has stated that rooftop areas of the first, second, and third floor would be landscaped in addition to rooftop areas on the base and the rooftop. Next slide. To facilitate the proposed development, the applicant seeks a zoning map amendment and zoning text amendment to map a, a mandatory inclusionary housing area and amend the section to allow for more flexible street wall locations. Next slide. First, the applicant requests a zoning map amendment from M one-one to a C six-three A district consisting of the southern half of the subject block, block twenty-twenty, from the center line, center lot line, sorry. C six-three A is a contextual mixed-use district, an R nine A equivalent, that allows a maximum FAR of six for commercial uses and eight-point-five FAR for residential uses in an MIH-designated area and seven-point-five FAR for community facility uses. A base height of sixty to a hundred and twenty-five feet is permitted with a maximum permitted building height of a hundred and seventy feet or a hundred and seventy-five feet with a qualifying ground floor or seventeen stories along a wide street, which Atlantic Avenue is at a hundred and twenty feet. Ground floor non-residential uses are also mandatory in a C six-three A districts along the primary street frontage. Off-street parking is required for forty percent of dwelling units and parking for affordability, affordable units are waived in this transit zone. Next slide. With the western boundary beginning two hundred and ten feet from Classen Avenue and the eastern boundary beginning a hundred and eighty feet from Franklin Avenue. Next slide. Secondly, the applicant requests a zoning text amendment to establish an MIH area under option two and the workforce option. Option two requires that at least thirty percent of the residential floor area to be affordable at an average of eighty percent AMI or below. The workforce option requires that at least thirty percent of the residential floor area to be affordable between thirty percent and a hundred and fifteen, am I, a hundred and fifteen percent AMI, while at least five percent at seventy percent AMI and five percent and ninety percent AMI. The applicant intends to select option two, consisting of a hundred and twenty-six affordable units. Next slide. Thirdly, the applicant seeks another text amendment to amend a section uh, which would apply special street wall regulations to zoning lots with frontage on Atlantic Avenue within C six-three A districts in Brooklyn's Community District Three. The underlying regulations for C six-three A require that the street wall for mixed-use developments be located at the street line for nearly the entire frontage. The proposed text, this proposed text would allow the site to set back from the street wall facing Atlantic Avenue at approximate three feet and reduce the street wall location requirement to seventy percent of the aggregate width of the, of the frontage. This would enable the sidewalk to effectively, from the widen, from the current width of approximate seventeen feet to a proposed width of twenty feet, shown in this rendering provided by the applicants, essentially enhancing the streetscape condition. Next slide. Lastly, as I had previously stated, the project area is within the M Crown framework area. The framework does identify this as a medium-density manufacturing district with a preference for job-dense uses. However, backing up a bit, this framework was mainly put together with community, community board eight, since the majority of the study area sits south of Atlantic Avenue within their borders. After the, after the framework was developed, the applicant started, uh, talking to community dis, community board three, and the land use committee identified a greater priority to support affordable housing, given the size of the sites and need within their district. The applicant also stated that council member Carnegie was supportive of more affordable housing at this site as well. In response, the applicant is trying to balance the initial framework conversations with the community board and council member and decided to move forward with this proposal that has a wider mix of uses and a greater proportion of residential use. Lastly, the applicant also believes that providing density to the mid and east of this block will allow for sunlight to residents on Lefferts Place in the rear. They also stated that having commercial in the mid-block not only breaks up the street wall uses but allows for the future of the, of the M Crown framework to have commercial and residential to the east and allow on the west to conform to the M Crown and district framework. Next slide. And this concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thanks, Jesse. Questions from any commissioners? Commissioner Levin?
Um, well, Jesse, I just wanted to thank you for, um, a, a clean and elegant presentation and particularly for your last slide, um, about the M Crown, plan, because I noticed that this density is significantly more than has been proposed by community board eight in, um, the M Crown plan. You know, ordinary mortals don't know the difference walking down the street between one community district and another, and as you know, I'm a big champion of coherent and contextual zoning, so the picture certainly, or the, the images certainly draw my attention and I will be very interested to hear what the community has to say about, uh, what's proposed for this location. Obviously, wide street, transit-oriented, but it's a, a, a site that has had that been the subject of a lot of community planning attention, and we have to respect what comes out of the community.
Thank you, Commissioner. Vice Chair Knuckles?
Well, again, I had one of those, uh, audio freezes and, uh, when, um, our presenter, uh, right at the point when he was going to characterize, uh, Councilman Carnegie, he froze, so I didn't hear that. I, I'd like to hear what he said, and then I'd, I'd like to, uh, give just a couple of observations. If you don't mind repeating what you said, sir.
Yeah, of course, Chair Knuckles. Um, so right, uh, the last slide, I had mentioned that the applicant had, uh, discussed, the applicant had, had told us that they, that they discussed with council member Carnegie and, uh, overall, um, that he was supportive of more affordable housing at this site. And, and that was pretty much all I had stated, and so that the applicant was trying to balance the initial framework, conversations with the community board, and conversations with the council member, um, and is moving forward with this proposal that has a wider mix of uses and a greater proportion of residential uses.
Okay, well, um, I think we're all in favor of, uh, more affordable housing, but, um, I think the R nine equivalent here, uh, is, uh, arguably excessive. I mean, it's a different site, and, and as Commissioner Levin just said, it is Atlantic Avenue, Wide Street, uh, in a transit, uh, oriented, uh, district, uh. You know, I'm thinking of nine sixty Franklin, where I think we have, we have at least concluded that an R nine was, um, excessive for that site, and I, you know, I think along Lefferts Boulevard and those row houses, I think their backyards will be in shade in perpetuity, uh, as a result of this building, so I, my initial reaction is that I just think an R nine equivalent is, is a bit, uh, a bit excessive here.
That's what essentially I was trying to say, too.
I'm sure there are distinctions between this and Franklin Avenue, but, but again, you know, we think if R nine, in my humble opinion, was, was, uh, excessive at the, at, at the Franklin Avenue side, I, I think it excessive here as well.
Commissioner Bernie?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, thank you, Jesse. Jesse, uh, do you have a ground floor plan? Did you show it and I missed it, so?
We did not, uh, share a ground floor plan, no.
Could we see if we can get one?
I can get, I can get back to you on that, making sure that you can have one.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Okay, so our final certification of the day, although just to let the commissioners and any listeners know as far as the time check, we have three pre-hearings and then a council modification and one post-hearing follow-up, so apologies for the lengthy meeting.
Yes, the, uh, seventh item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map, zoning text amendment in Brooklyn Community District Eight. Our presenter is Jonah Rogoff.
Good afternoon, commissioners. This is an application also with, with the M Crown area. That's application returning for pre-hearing, uh, by Vanderbilt Atlantic Holdings LLC for a zoning map amendment from M one-one in R six B districts to a C six-three X district and zoning text amendments to map an MIH area and allow street wall location flexibility to facilitate an eighteen-story mixed-use development with three hundred and sixteen units, ninety-five of which will be affordable and approximately fifty-one thousand square feet of retail and seventy-five hundred square feet of community facility space. Next slide. I'll just do a really brief summary of, of the project and its context. Uh, so the project area is located in the Prospect Heights neighborhood of Brooklyn within Community District Eight. Next slide. The surrounding area contains a mix of residential with community facility uses along with local commercial concentrated along Vanderbilt Avenue, a one-hundred-foot-wide corridor as well as Fulton Street located a block to the north. Atlantic Avenue, a one-hundred-and-twenty-foot-wide corridor contains primarily heavy service-based uses and mixed-use buildings. Most of the development site is zoned M one-one and part of the M Crown area, which is an ongoing neighborhood planning effort led by Community Board Eight that seeks to support housing and job growth, among other priorities. M one-one is a low-density manufacturing district that allows industrial and commercial use up to one FAR and certain community facility use up to two-point-four FAR. Buildings in M one-one districts can have a street wall up to thirty feet, after which heights are governed by the sky exposure plane. M one-one also has high parking requirements, as Jesse noted in his previous presentation. Uh, much of the surrounding area has been subject to department-sponsored contextual rezonings, including the area-wide rezonings of Prospect Heights in nineteen ninety-four and Fort Greene-Clinton Hill in two thousand and seven, which mapped R six B on many side streets and R seven A along certain corridors such as Atlantic and Vanderbilt avenues, mostly in an effort to preserve the neighborhood character and accommodate modest growth. Directly to the north of the site is an R nine district with a C two-five overlay, which was mapped as part of the eight oh-nine Atlantic application in two thousand and nineteen. Directly northwest of the site is a C six-three A commercial district, which has an R nine A district, uh, residential equivalent and was mapped as part of the four-seventy Vanderbilt application in two thousand and nine. Next slide. And just to quickly illustrate parts of the area, this is a bird's eye perspective looking northwest with the development site shaded in red. On the left side is the seventeen-story five-fifty Vanderbilt Avenue development along with four-seventy Vanderbilt, uh, which is a high-density loft-style office building and includes a new mixed-use building located to the north on Fulton Street. As shown in the view above, the area is well-served by public transit. It's located about three avenue blocks from the Atlantic Terminal Transit Hub, which provides access to the L I R R, ten subway lines, and several buses, while the Clinton-Washington Avenue Station with access to the C train is located less than a quarter mile away on Fulton Street. Three bus lines and several city bike stations are also accessible within a couple of blocks. Next slide. The proposed project area and development site are co-terminals located on the western portion of block eleven twenty-two bounded by Atlantic Avenue to the north, Underhill Avenue to the east, Pacific Street to the south, and Vanderbilt Avenue to the west. The development site is a thirty-eight thousand eight hundred square foot lot comprised of seven tax lots, which include a McDonald's fast food business on lots one sixty-eight and seventy-one, two- and three-story residential buildings on lots sixty-nine and seventy, an open storage area on lot nine, and then a three-story mixed-use building on lot ten. Next slide. And just a few refresher photos. The top left is a view of the sites at Vanderbilt Avenue frontage showing the McDonald's fast food business and its accessory parking lot. The top right is the site's Atlantic Avenue. The top right is the site's Atlantic Avenue frontage looking west, and then on the bottom left is a view of the site from Atlantic Avenue looking southwest. Next slide. In the second set of photos, the top left is a view of the site looking northeast from Vanderbilt Avenue. The top right is a view of Pacific Street with the existing residential on lots sixty-nine and seventy on the left side. And then on the bottom left is a view of the Vanderbilt eleven Vanderbilt Avenue corridor looking north towards Atlantic Avenue. We can see five fifty Vanderbilt on the left and the construction of eight oh nine Atlantic in the center. Next slide. And lastly, just a view on the left side of Atlantic Avenue looking east. And then on the right is a view of Atlantic Avenue looking west, where you can also see four seventy Vanderbilt and Atlantic Terminal further in the background. Next slide. The applicant proposes an eighteen-story mixed-use building totaling approximately three hundred and forty-three thousand square feet or eight point eight three FAR with three hundred and sixteen units, ninety-five of which would be affordable, as well as fifty one thousand square feet of commercial and seventy five hundred square feet of community facility space, which would be distributed between the first and second stories. Next slide. And then with respect to the buildings massing, the applicant proposes several base heights and setbacks with massing oriented near the corner of Vanderbilt and Atlantic Avenues. Starting along Pacific Street, the development would be four and five stories and then rise to ten stories at the corner of Vanderbilt, followed by another step up to thirteen stories and then finally eighteen stories at the corner of Atlantic, topping out with a height of one hundred and ninety-five feet. Next slide. And just another view of the proposed development shaded in white with the nearby existing and future built context, including five fifty Vanderbilt with a height of two hundred and one feet and eight oh nine Atlantic with a height of three hundred and twelve feet. The future buildout of Pacific Park is also shown in opaque shading. Next slide. With respect to the ground floor, an eight-foot setback along Atlantic and Vanderbilt avenues is being proposed to expand the sidewalk. Along Pacific Street, the applicant's proposing a community facility and has reached a tentative agreement with Creative Outlet, a local dance nonprofit, to occupy that space. Additionally, there would be a curb cut and entrance ramp to a ninety space accessory parking area located in the cellar. Next slide. To facilitate the proposal, the applicant seeks a zoning map amendment and a zoning text amendment to map an MIH area and add a new section to allow more flexible street wall locations. Next slide. First, the applicant requests a zoning map amendment from M one one and R six B districts to a C six three X district. From Vanderbilt, the C six three X district would extend two hundred feet along Atlantic and one hundred and twenty-five feet along Pacific. C six three X is a high-density contextual commercial district with a residential equivalent of R nine X. When paired with an MIH area, C six three X allows residential up to nine point seven FAR, community facilities up to nine FAR and commercial use up to six FAR. Base heights can be between sixty and one hundred and forty-five on narrow streets and between one hundred and five and one hundred and forty-five feet on or within one hundred feet of wide streets. With a qualifying ground floor, building heights can reach additional few feet to one hundred and ninety-five feet or nineteen stories along a wide street or two hundred and five feet or twenty stories on a wide street. Parking is generally required for forty percent of the non-income restricted units and optional for non-residential use. Additionally, the district allows multiple stories of commercial and then mixed-use buildings on wide streets are also required to maintain a non-residential frontage on the ground floor. When paired with MIH areas, R six B allows up to two point two FAR for residential, as well as base and building heights up to forty-five and fifty-five feet respectively, together with a qualifying ground floor. Next slide. Due to the project area being split between the C six three X and R six B districts, the development site would yield a blended FAR of eight point eight three. A forty-five-foot wide portion of the site is proposed to remain in the R six B district, which would limit the building height to sixty-five feet within twenty-five feet of the the C six district and therefore ensure a height transition along the side street. The applicant also intends to utilize the split lot zoning rules to apply the proposed C six district to Lot Ten on Atlantic Avenue, which is partly outside of the rezoning area. Next slide. Second, the applicant requests a zoning text amendment to establish an MIH area under option two, which would require thirty percent of the residential floor area be affordable at an average of eighty percent of the AMI or below. And due to the substantial increase in residential capacity being proposed as part of the the project, the MIH area would extend over the R six B portion, covering the entire development site. Next slide. Third, the applicant seeks another text amendment to create a new section, which would apply special street wall regulations to zoning lots with frontage on Atlantic within C six three X districts in Brooklyn's Community District Eight. C six three X requires that ground-level street wall be located at the street line for mixed-use developments on wide streets. The proposed text would allow the development to setback from the street wall, particularly along Atlantic Avenue, which would allow the sidewalk to expand from twelve to twenty feet in order to enhance the quality of the streetscape. And on this, I just want to note that in response to a question and comments at certification, the applicant have provided this rendering to better visualize the ground floor space. Next slide. I also just want to note again that the project is within the M Crown study area on its western edge as part of the developments framework. The site was identified as an appropriate location for a high-density commercial district, primarily due to its proximity to public transit and being at the intersection of two wide and active thoroughfares. Next slide. During public review, Community Board Eight held a public hearing on May fifth and voted on May thirteenth to disapprove the application with a series of conditions. Before summarizing the recommendation, I just want to preface that this was guided by a resolution from Community Board Eight that was adopted in the fall of two thousand and nineteen, which built on the M Crown framework and called for between six to seven total FAR on Atlantic Avenue with an FAR preference or incentive for non-residential uses. So first, the board recommended that lots seventy and seventy-one located on the site's southern frontage by the corner of Vanderbilt and Pacific be rezoned to R seven A with a C one four overlay to better match the Vanderbilt Atlantic, sorry, excuse me, the Vanderbilt Avenue zoning just to the cellar. Second, the board recommended that the rest of the sites, Pacific Street frontage on lots sixty-eight and sixty-nine, as well as a portion of Lot One, be rezoned to R six B. Third, that three options be considered for lots nine and ten and a portion of Lot One located on the sites of Atlantic Avenue frontage. Under option A, the applicant may remove these lots from the application and file as a text amendment to create a contextual variation of the existing C six one zoning district with required non-residential frontage, consisting with the regulations of the Special Enhanced Commercial District with a base FAR of six and incentive FAR of one for non-residential use. If option A is not possible, then under option B, the applicant should make a binding commitment to C six two A, which has an R eight A equivalent, and then restrict residential use on the lots to four point six FAR. If option B is not possible, then under option C, the lots should be rezoned to C four or five D, which is an R seventy residential equivalent. Next slide. In addition, the board also recommended that MIH options one and three be mapped and that the applicant make a commitment to offer the required affordable units pursuant to option three. Lastly, the applicant would also make a commitment to restrict the use of eight thousand square feet on the site to a use group nine A, limited to studios to ensure permanent facility for creative arts sector studio. And this is in connection with the proposed dance studio, just to clarify. At this point, I just want to note that we have not received a recommendation from the Brooklyn Borough President yet, but once that is available, be sure to share it. And then I also want to note that in response to a question at certification from Commissioner Ron Pershad regarding the proposed affordability and bedroom mix, the applicant team has shared some details with us, noting that among the three hundred and sixteen total units, fifteen percent are proposed to be studios, forty-five percent with one bedrooms and then thirty percent would be three bedrooms. This bedroom mix would also have a similar proportion and apply to both the market rate and affordable units pursuant to MIH. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jonah. Questions from the commission? Commissioner Duett.
Thank you. Has the applicant responded to the request for the binding agreement on the dance studio?
I believe so. I can have them speak to that further. I don't, I know that they've made a commitment, but I'm not sure about the the nature of that, if it's binding or not.
I'd like to hear from them on Wednesday. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Levin.
And I noted in the Community Board recommendation and also in public press about the Community Board's deliberations that the applicant presented an alternate plan to the Community Board. And if that's relevant to our consideration of this application, if it's a revised proposal that the applicant is seriously pursuing, I'd be interested in hearing about that as well.
Sure, I can provide more information, maybe a post-hearing follow-up, but broadly speaking, they propose to carve out a sliver of the R nine along Atlantic on the eastern side as R eight A to provide a better transition or precedent along Atlantic. We do have some initial concerns about that and maybe we can articulate that.
Okay, so it was just, but you helped me understand. It's just about a sliver piece to integrate it with what comes further down Atlantic. It's not a wholesale
No.
change of what they're proposing here. Okay, thank you.
Okay, and not seeing other hands raised. We will see this on Wednesday, public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jonah. The eighth item on our agenda is a pre-hearing review of a zoning map amendment in Queens Community District fourteen. Our presenter presenter is Hala Saleh.
Thank you, Ryan, and good afternoon, Commissioners. Next slide, please. This is a pre-hearing item for a private application in the Rockaway Park neighborhood in Queens Community District fourteen. The application is for a zoning map amendment from an R seven A C one three to an R seven A C two four to facilitate a gym within a new eight-story mixed residential and commercial building and was certified on April fifth. Next slide. The project area is located towards the center of the Rockaway Peninsula, near the terminus of the Beach One Sixteenth Street A Station. And the ferry terminal is also located nearby at Beach One O Eighth Street. Next slide. The site is located on the west side of Beach One Sixteenth Street between Rockaway Beach Boulevard and Ocean Promenade. The development site shown in red is an L-shaped zoning lot improved with two as-of-right buildings, one of which is currently under construction. The remaining lots within the rezoning boundary consist of commercial and mixed-use buildings ranging from one to three stories. Next slide. The project area was originally zoned R five with a C one two overlay in nineteen sixty-one and was rezoned to R seven A C one three in nineteen eighty-nine through the Rockaway Park rezoning and has remained unchanged since then. Retail and commercial uses are concentrated along Beach One Sixteenth Street, and there are several six-to-eight-story multifamily developments west and south of the site, as well as several nursing homes ranging from three to six stories southeast of the site. Next slide. The image on the left shows a newly constructed eight-story mixed-use building within the development site. And the building was built as of right under existing zoning and commercial overlays for the exception of a proposed physical cultural establishment use. The image on the right shows the existing commercial development along Beach One Sixteenth Street, also within the rezoning area. Next slide. The proposed development is improved with three buildings, which are primarily developed as of right, with the exception of the intended PCE use in Building A. Building A and B share one zoning lot and Building A is an eight-story mixed-use building with seventy-eight market rate dwelling units and approximately fourteen thousand square feet of ground floor commercial space, of which four thousand square feet is proposed as the PCE use. Building B is currently under construction as a four-story townhomes development with eight dwelling units. And Building C currently operates as a one-story restaurant and real estate office with three thousand and sixty square feet of commercial space and will continue to operate under the same tenants. Next slide. Additionally, the development provides a hundred and eight parking spaces in the cellar of the building and a parking garage would be accessed from Beach One Seventeenth Street through a ramp and shared between both developments. Next slide. Building A is built to eight stories and has a base height of sixty-five feet prior to providing a setback and rising up to eighty-five feet. And Building B is built to forty feet prior to providing a setback and rising up to fifty-one feet. The base flood elevation is ten feet and Building A is designed to an elevation of twelve point four three feet, while Building B would have a design flood elevation of eleven feet. Next slide. The proposed zoning map amendment would amend the commercial overlay from a C one three to a C two four. The proposed C two four overlay would expand the existing permitted uses to include neighborhood services. There would be no changes to the permitted building envelope. However, the accessory off-street parking requirement would be reduced in the proposed C two four district. The proposed rezoning would facilitate the development of a PCE by way of BSA special permit on the ground floor of the eight-story mixed-use development along White Street and near Mass Transit. Next slide. Both Queens Community District fourteen and Queens Borough President held a public hearings and recommended approval of the application. Next slide. In summary, this is a private application in Rockaway Park to amend a commercial overlay to a C two four in order to facilitate the development of a PCE within a constructed eight-story mixed-use building. That completes my presentation and I can now answer any questions.
Thank you, Hala. Questions from the commission? Not seeing any. We will see this matter on Wednesday at our public hearing.
Thank you.
The ninth item on the agenda is a pre-hearing review of a citywide zoning text amendment. Our presenters are Angela Belisio and Christopher Lee.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Angela Belisio, the Lead Planner for Elevate Transit Zoning for Accessibility Proposal. I'm joined today by Chris Lee, the zoning lead on this project. This is also a pre-hearing item. We'll go through a summary of the zoning for accessibility proposal that we presented to you at review session on April fifth of this year and then go through the feedback that we received during the public review process. In two thousand and nineteen, the New York City Council Land Use Division published a Lexco report entitled Zoning for Transit Accessibility that proposed strengthening existing zoning tools to accelerate the implementation of ADA access throughout the city. Next slide, please. Today, the MTA and the Department of City Planning are proposing a citywide zoning text amendment that builds on the ideas laid out in that City Council report. Elevate Transit Zoning for Accessibility, or ZFA, is a citywide zoning text amendment that proposes to expand two specific zoning tools to better coordinate private development and station improvements. First, a transit easement requirement would apply system-wide. And second, a new transit improvement bonus program that would apply in the high-sensitive areas of the city. Next slide, please. The MTA's New York City Transit System is over a hundred years old. Most stations were constructed before nineteen fifty. And as a result, less than thirty percent of subway and Staten Island railway stations are accessible. The MTA system also includes the Long Island Railroad and the The MTA system also includes the Long Island Railroad and the Metro-North Railroad. And while about 65% of these commuter rail stations are accessible, the greater interval between commuter rail stations magnifies the impact each inaccessible station has on the rider. Increasing accessibility is a key step in modernizing the city's transit system as a lack of elevator access in stations affects many New Yorkers who have a hard time navigating stairs. And these riders include people with physical disabilities and seniors, parents with young children, people with temporary injuries. In order to navigate the system, these customers rely on accessible stations, which may not be close to their origin or destination point. The result is that a subway ride that should take minutes could take hours. And for these transit riders, more elevators throughout the system would allow for a shorter, more direct trip. Next slide, please. To address deficiencies in our current transit system, the MTA prioritizes accessibility improvements and other station improvements through the capital programs. In the 20 to 24 capital program, which dedicated $5 billion to making 77 Subway, Metro-North, and Long Island Railroad stations accessible. When this capital program is completed, 43% of subway stations will be accessible. Additionally, one goal of this current capital program is to ensure that no subway rider is more than two stations away from an accessible station with the anticipation that through future programs, all possible stations will be made accessible. The current capital program targets stations in all five boroughs in order to ensure this goal is met. And also to note that in spite of the ongoing pandemic, the MTA is acting on these goals. In the last year, the MTA opened 11 new ADA stations and awarded more than a dozen new ADA station projects. Next slide, please. But progress can be slow because elevator construction in subway stations is particularly challenging for any number of reasons. As I mentioned before, stations are old and can have complex infrastructure, which makes installing an elevator expensive or sometimes impossible. Within stations, platforms can be narrow, limiting the locations where an elevator can be placed. And at the sidewalk level, existing buildings near stations can prevent elevators from being built in the most oftenable place. Sidewalks themselves can be too narrow to allow for clearance for an elevator. And then subsurface conditions present decades' worth of highly complex utility infrastructure, including sewers and water pipes and electrical cables. And because of these unique challenges, often the preferable or sometimes the only solution is to place an elevator in the corresponding circulation elements within private property. And this is not unprecedented, as there are already dozens of station stairs and elevators integrated into private properties throughout the subway system. Next slide, please. Elevator construction can be quite challenging. And to help better coordinate and align new developments with transit station needs, we have transit-related zoning provisions in place to help alleviate some of these burdens. Such provisions can consist of easement requirements and station improvement bonuses. Easement provisions address the challenges of locating new station entrances and other transit amenities. An easement is a small permanent space reserved in a building for a transit agency to use in the future and have traditionally been used to provide space for new station entrances or passageways or other ancillary facilities that support subway lines such as emergency egress or ventilation structures. However, in the zoning resolution today, these provisions have a very limited coverage and only apply in a few areas of the city, such as along Second Avenue subway, Second Avenue for the Second Avenue subway line, and most recently in the special Inwood District. And this means that the zoning resolution does not currently provide a consistent system-wide approach for facilitating transit easements on development sites around transit stations. And as a result of these limitations, there have been missed opportunities for the MTA to locate ADA access at optimal locations at sites next to stations. And next slide, please. The zoning resolution also contains transit bonus mechanisms to support the creation of transit improvements. In the dentists, commercial districts of the city, we've incentivized developers to provide both the space and to construct station improvements, including ADA access through floor area bonuses that provide additional development rights. As with easement provisions, transit bonus mechanisms are also limited to a handful of areas near our central business districts. And within this limited geography, only sites that are right next to subway stations can take advantage of the standard subway improvement bonus program. Additionally, the current process associated with obtaining a transit bonus can be quite cumbersome, adding time and risk to the development schedule. And all of these factors have limited the number of subway bonus applications that we have seen to date. Next slide, please. So to build on the effectiveness and to address the limitations of these current zoning provisions, we are proposing zoning for accessibility. A citywide zoning text amendment that will create more opportunities for accessibility throughout the transit system to support a long-term planning needs of mass transit stations and to facilitate transit station upgrades beyond the limited coverage of today's transit-related provisions. Zoning for accessibility proposes to expand the easement requirement system-wide to most station adjacent sites, provide zoning flexibility on sites where easements are provided to offset potential burdens for this requirement on development feasibility. And finally, to increase participation in the transit bonus program by increasing the area of applicability to other high-density areas of the city. I'll now pass it on to Chris Lee, who will go through the specifics of the proposal.
Good afternoon, commissioners. Can we go to the next slide, please? So the first component of this proposal is a system-wide easement provision that would assist MTA in identifying opportunities for locating future station entrances. As part of this provision, all developments and enlargements on zoning lots of at least 5,000 square feet in an applicable zoning district that are also within 50 feet of a mass transit station, we need to consult with the MTA and the chairperson of the City Planning Commission to determine whether an easement is needed for future station access improvements. Applicable zoning districts include residence districts that support multifamily apartment buildings, which include all districts at or above R5 with a commercial overlay and R5D districts, and medium and high-density commercial in all manufacturing districts. While the process of obtaining a certification would be required for most sites within 50 feet of a transit station, it is anticipated that MTA would only ask for an easement in limited places that are the most optimal for future access around each station. Next slide, please. Easement volumes can vary in shape and size and can affect development sites in a number of ways. The easement itself can take up floor space on a site and reduce available floor area for the development itself. The shape and size of an easement can also occupy a large amount of space within a development's building envelope. This not only affects the direct area that is occupied by the easement, but also has implications for construction feasibility around such area. Easements can also restrict available space to provide ground floor uses and parking spaces. And depending on the type of development, may create compatibility issues with more sensitive uses such as apartment units and other residential uses. Next slide, please. So in order to facilitate the provision of easements, targeted relief from certain zoning limits would be provided to minimize potential challenges for construction on these sites. There are five general categories of provisions being proposed. Floor area and open space provisions would exclude easements from zoning floor area. Easements would also be allowed as permitted obstructions when they are located outside of buildings. In certain zoning districts, law coverage would also be increased to allow easements to be integrated more easily within buildings. Height and setback relief would allow limited height increases and additional street wall flexibility. Sites that provide an easement would be able to increase their maximum height by 10 feet. Additionally, in R7 districts and above, maximum heights would be increased by 20 feet for developments that provide an above-grade easement. Parking relief would be offered in the form of a 15-space parking deduction and parking waivers for small sites that are either below 10,000 square feet or 15,000 square feet. Use allowances would allow temporary uses within the easement volume until such space is needed for a new station entrance and allow commercial uses within 30 feet of an easement to promote compatible uses around station entry and exit points. Finally, streetscape provisions would exempt easement volumes from the streetscape requirement and ensure that curb cuts are not located within 30 feet of an easement. Next slide. While the required easement consultation process would only apply to developments and enlargements on sites with a lot area of at least 5,000 square feet in an applicable zoning district, the proposal would also facilitate the voluntary provision of easements on other sites. On small sites with a lot area of less than 5,000 square feet in an applicable zoning district, the same set of relief would apply. On sites with an existing building that is being converted, targeted relief would be provided to facilitate the provision of an easement area within an existing building. In other instances, the transit agency may need additional sidewalk space or clear path around an existing or future station entrance rather than easement. Where a clear path is provided, street wall flexibility would apply. Next slide, please. The second component of the proposal is an expanded transit bonus program that would be optional for sites that are approximate to a mass transit station. To address the limitations of today's subway bonus mechanism, the proposed transit bonus would continue to grant a floor area bonus of up to 20% of the maximum floor area ratio, but expand the geography of areas where a transit bonus may be used to other high-density areas. As mentioned previously, the current special permit process associated with obtaining a transit bonus can be quite cumbersome and adding time and risk to the development schedule. To facilitate the application or review process of obtaining a bonus, the new program would be subject to a simplified discretionary review and approval process in the form of an authorization by the City Planning Commission. Next slide. As mentioned earlier, the current subway bonus special permit only applies to station-adjacent sites in the highest-density commercial districts in the city. Can we go to the next slide, please? The new bonus program would expand this applicability to other high-density areas, including all R9 and R10 districts in the city, their commercial equivalent, and M16 districts. In addition, it would also allow sites that are within 500 feet of a station to participate in the program in exchange for an off-site improvement that could be constructed at a station that is not immediately adjacent to the site. Within central business districts, off-site improvements may be provided within a distance of 1,500 feet from the development site. So this new feature of the new bonus program to allow both onsite and offsite improvements would encourage a greater number of developments to provide station improvements. Next slide, please. As with today's subway bonus special permit, a floor area bonus of up to 20% could be earned by providing a significant station improvement. The types of improvements that could be provided through the new transit bonus would be similar to the improvements that could be provided through today's bonus mechanism. These improvements have, for the most part, been provided in the form of significant accessibility and circulation improvements. Examples include the construction of elevators, additional station entrances, mezzanine expansion, and platform upgrades. Where stations are inaccessible, ADA upgrades would be prioritized. The amount of floor area bonus is contingent on the degree to which such improvements enhance access and station environment. The proportionality between the amount of additional floor area granted and station improvements provided varies depending on the individual station need and their unique conditions. The floor area generated from the bonus may only be occupied once the MTA determines that such improvements are usable by the public. Next slide. Like the existing subway bonus special permit, commission approval of the proposed improvements and bonus floor area would be discretionary and contingent on specific findings. The findings listed here are based on the current subway bonus special permit and look at the benefits that would be provided by the proposed improvement to the general public. As part of the City Planning Commission's considerations, improvements would be evaluated to determine if the amount of floor area to be authorized is commensurate with the benefits provided to the station. In addition, the commission would have to find that the improvements would result in significant enhancements to station accessibility, capacity, and overall design. Next slide, please. As for the interplay between the transit bonus and other bonuses that exist today, generally where other citywide floor area bonuses are available, the transit bonus could not be stacked or used with other bonuses. However, in areas where voluntary inclusion housing bonuses are available, the transit bonus is designed to work with inclusion housing. Specifically, the transit and affordable housing bonuses could be used individually or in combination to ensure that the availability of the transit bonus does not limit the use of the affordable housing bonus. The same options would not be available where sites are located within mandatory inclusion housing areas as MIH would continue to be a requirement regardless of the transit bonus. To maximize the amount of transit improvements that could be provided through this program, the additional floor area generated from the transit bonus would not be subject to inclusion housing requirements. Next slide. Outside of voluntary inclusion housing, we reviewed all affected special districts and aimed to preserve the purposes of existing bonuses in these special districts. There are two other limited instances where the transit bonus could also be stacked. Within the special 125th Street District, the transit bonus could be used in addition to the visual or performing arts bonus. Also, in limited areas in Hudson Yards and Garment Center, the proposed transit bonus could be used in combination with the district improvement bonus to create more opportunities for improving 34th Street Station and the 42nd Street Port Authority Station. The transit bonus, however, could only be used after exhausting all available floor area from inclusion housing and the district improvement bonus. Next slide. And finally, as part of the zoning text, for both developments providing an easement or transit improvement, modifications to other zoning provisions would be available pursuant to additional discretionary review and approval. Additional relief may be needed to address unique site conditions that may create challenges for providing an easement or accommodating additional floor area that is generated from the bonus program. So to allow for such flexibility, further use, bulk parking, loading, and streetscape modifications would be available pursuant to discretionary review and approval. Depending on the amount of relief that is requested, modifications would either be subject to an authorization that would allow a height increase of up to 25% or through a special permit if more height relief is needed. Modifications pursuant to the authorization and special permit would be subject to specific commission findings. Next slide. So in summary, zoning for accessibility is an additional tool that would bring us closer to making all stations accessible across our system. It proposes a system-wide easement provision that would require all applicable developments within 50 feet of a mass transit station to seek a certification to determine if they need to provide an easement. It is also proposing an expansion of the transit improvement bonus program, which would allow a floor area bonus in exchange for significant transit improvements through an authorization. As part of the authorization, applications would be subject to community board review and City Planning Commission review and approval. And finally, it is also proposing additional discretionary actions that would allow for further zoning modifications, including an authorization that would allow for a height increase of up to 25% and a special permit for anything beyond that. And now I'll hand the presentation back to Angela. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. On April 5th, this proposal was referred out to all 59 community boards, the five borough presidents and the five borough boards. While this is a non-Ularp item, it has followed the Ularp timeline and has had 60 days of public review. Because this is a non-Ularp item, it does not come with the requirement for community boards to submit recommendations. But in most cases, community boards did submit input in the form of a vote. Oh, next slide, please. As of June 18th, we received input from 49 of the 59 community boards. Thirty-five community boards voted favorably or favorably with conditions. Six voted favorably or unfavorably with conditions. And eight boards chose to either waive their vote or voted no objection. Additionally, two more boards voted favorably with conditions. Three borough presidents have voted favorably or favorably with conditions and one has voted unfavorably. As a result of the public review process, we've received about 60 considerations and comments, which came from all five boroughs. In general, the issues that were raised in public review align with the three different aspects of the proposal. The system-wide easement provision, the transit improvement bonus, and the additional modifications that can be received through a discretionary action. About three-quarters of the comments overall were about the transit improvement bonus. On the following slides, I'll go through the conditional feedback we received during the public review period, which we've categorized into these three general areas. Next slide, please. We received around 16 considerations regarding the easement requirement with at least one comment coming from each borough. There are four general categories of consideration related to easement. First, we received a couple of comments related to how the easement could impact development and overall housing construction. Some had cited concerns about MTA acquisition of private property for public transit easements. And others have commented on how such requirement would add additional review time for getting development applications approved. Second, we received a set of comments on the proposed certification process. Specifically, some community boards have requested that as part of the certification process, they are either notified of, consulted on, or partake in the review of the easements in their districts. As Chris outlined earlier, the easement requirement is being proposed as a chair certification and is not subject to public review, which is consistent with easement requirements in zoning currently. The goal of the certification process is to ensure that developers consult with the MTA on whether an easement is needed and is intended to be as simplified as possible. Third, we've received a number of comments on the proposed zoning relief for easements. First, there was a general recommendation that we limit the number of reliefs given for a transit easement. Additionally, there were concerns about specific relief provisions, including the allowance of temporary uses within the easement volume as permitted obstructions and the degree to which retail uses are permitted around easements. As Chris pointed out, the retail use alliances are being proposed as an option in residence districts and are intended to promote complementary uses around an easement area and to enhance sidewalk environment. Finally, there was a request that the proposed zoning relief do not apply around the Second Avenue subway stations. The proposed easement provisions would not apply in certain areas with existing easement requirements that were established for area-specific plans, and this would include the special transit land use district. Next slide, please. Finally, we received some comments on the future of the easement volume. It was suggested that there be more explicit language regarding when the MTA would make capital commitments to improve the easement space in the future and clarification on how the area in and around the easement would be maintained. Next slide, please. We received the most comments about the expanded transit bonus mechanism. All but two of these considerations came from community boards in Manhattan. First, we received some overall comments. A couple of community boards recommended that the process for obtaining a transit improvement bonus remain a CPC special permit. As I mentioned in the introduction, to date, there has been very limited use of the current transit bonus special permit. By simplifying the discretionary review and approval process, we hope to increase the number of development sites that would include transit improvements as part of their projects. A few boards disagreed that transit improvements should be provided for zoning bonuses, but rather proposed improvements be mandatory for significant developments or be achieved through other means like tax incentives. Finally, it was requested that each bonus application include Finally, it was requested that each bonus application include a full environmental review to assess the cumulative environmental impacts of multiple bonuses in one area. Because the authorization is a discretionary action, any application would require environmental review, which would account for cumulative impacts of any known bonus projects pursuant to the secret technical manual. Second, we had a set of comments on the geographic applicability of the bonus, suggesting both, suggesting both restricting and expanding the area of applicability. It was suggested that the applicability of the bonus be expanded to developments in mid-density zones and that the proposal ensure that accessibility improvements were equally distributed. Even with the passage of this proposal, the MTA's primary mechanism for improving transit stations would continue to be its capital program. And these programs ensure that transit improvements are made in all five boroughs. This initiative will supplement the MTA capital program to help meet the goal of system-wide accessibility more rapidly and efficiently. Transit improvements, though, are costly. Based on our analysis, with a bonus that's limited to twenty percent, only the largest sites in the highest-density areas generate the substantial amount of floor area necessary to cover those costs. We also received considerate, received recommendations to modify the eligible distance between a development site and a station, with one recommendation that the distance be decreased and another suggesting that there be no distance limit around a specific station in their community district. We are proposing expanding the area of applicability around each station because developments that are near but not immediately adjacent to stations would likely generate hardship for those stations. The outer distance limit, on the other hand, ensures that there continues to be a linkage between the development site and the location of the improvement. There was also a recommendation for excluding recently built stations from the bonus regime. Next slide, please. We received a series of comments concerning how the proposed transit improvement bonus would interact with both proposed easement provision and other bonuses. First, for clarification, clarification was requested on whether the height received through the easement zoning bonus, excuse me, whether the height received through an easement zoning relief and height from the density bonus could be stacked. As outlined in the presentation, for development sites seeking a bonus that are also subject to the easement provisions, the relief for easements and bonuses are intended to complement each other. The relief proposed as part of the easement provision would be as of right and ensure that the space provided does not unduly constrain the development site. A density bonus through an authorization would be available if the easement is improved by the developer. Because the bonuses for floor area, any further height increase beyond the easement relief would be a result of additional discretionary action. It was requested that the proposed transit bonus should be invoked only after, but not instead of inclusionary housing bonus. As Chris outlined earlier, proposed transit bonus and affordable housing bonuses could be used individually or in combination. To preserve the purpose of the existing inclusionary housing bonus and to maximize the uptake of all bonuses, the proposal allows for either or both to be utilized together. Finally, it was requested that zoning for accessibility not impact the existing hierarchy of bonuses in special districts. In drafting this proposal, we reviewed all special districts and aimed to preserve the purpose of existing bonuses in special districts. As Chris discussed, there are two instances where the transit bonus could be stacked outside of inclusionary housing. When used in combination with a special, with a district improvement bonus, all available, all available floor area from an inclusionary housing bonus and a district approver bonus must be exhausted before the transit bonus could be used. Relatedly, multiple boards suggested that if a site is subject to mandatory inclusionary housing requirements, that the bonus area also be subject to at least those requirements. The proposed text specifies that bonus floor area generated as a result of the bonus would not be subject to affordable housing requirements, with the understanding that the revenues from that bonus are rather being diverted towards transit improvements. Finally, multiple boards had considerations regarding the improvements that could generate a bonus. First, there are requests that the text more clearly establish criteria explaining the relationship between the transit improvements and the resulting bonus. Some boards stated that only accessibility improvements should qualify to receive a floor area bonus. On the other hand, the need to include provisions that promote station beautification through site-specific art in addition to accessibility regulations was also stressed. Finally, it was suggested that non-accessibility improvements be characterized as incidental to the main application, but should not independently receive a density bonus. If a station is not currently accessible, then an elevator and/or other accessibility improvements must be provided in order to receive a bonus. If a station is already fully accessible, other station access and circulation improvements could be provided, which may include redundant elevators, additional stairs, or escalators. These station capacity improvements are density ameliorating and are consistent with acceptable improvements in the current transit bonus special permit. Secondly, multiple boards proposed some standardization of the improvement and a quantification of how much bonus improvements could achieve. One board proposed that the MTA have a standard list of significant improvements and recommended that a standard definition of significant accessibility improvements be developed and incorporated by reference in the proposed zoning text. Because this provision would cover multiple stations beyond a specific geography, there's no list of specified, specified improvements. Each station in the system is unique, and elevator solutions achieved by this initiative would need to be decided on a case-by-case basis, depending on the side of the bonus, the size of the bonus sought and the individual site and station conditions. Additionally, it is important to maintain that this be a discretionary action to ensure public review. Finally, we had multiple boards concerned about zoning lot mergers and proposed ways to regulate the size of bonuses granted on those sites. Next slide, please. We also received a few recommendations regarding the proposed additional modifications that could be made through an additional discretionary action. First, it was requested that notice be included as a requirement before the CPC authorizes any additional modifications to ongoing regulations. We want to note that the proposed authorization is subject to community board review. Similarly, it was proposed that a special permit rather than an authorization be required for all additional modifications to ensure that any additional modifications be subject to sufficient public review. Additionally, it was requested that the special permit require City Planning Commission to find that the proposed modifications only allow modifications to the minimum extent necessary that will enable the development of this transit improvement. That concludes the summary of the input received to date on the zoning proposal part of this as during this public review process. We did also receive a handful of comments directed at the MTA and the MTA capital program. They include a request to add specific stations to the capital program, requests for specific capital funding allocations, and requests to speed up the capital program funding of station improvements in general. So thank you very much for your time, and we would like to answer any questions that you might have.
Well, thank you, Angela and Chris, for another clear explanation of the proposal and Angela for a just magnificent synthesis of a lot of information. I suspect some other commissioners might have the same reaction that I do of thinking back to zoning for coastal resiliency, another recent citywide, and the extent of the comments shows, I think, the sophistication of our community boards, but also the fact that sometimes comments came in exactly opposite direction just shows how diverse our city is. And I really appreciate your putting it into, into buckets. And so I see that we have some raised hands, starting with Commissioner Duett.
Thank you. Angela, to clarify, did you say that the distance would be expanded? I know that there was a concern from Borough President Adams about the York Street Station and the lack of availability of development sites in the area. So did I understand correctly that?
Well, the proposal would expand the bonus applicability from the current bonus. Transit bonus, today you have to be adjacent to a subway station in order to apply for a bonus. And our proposal, we're proposing you could be either five hundred feet from a station or fifteen hundred feet from a station if you are in a CBD. And so, and Borough President.
I think he was looking to see if it could be within the same community board.
Yeah, his, his request was that in order to improve the York Station specifically, that there be sort of no distance limits in order to capture as many properties in, in downtown Brooklyn that could potentially improve the York Street Station. And so that is slightly.
That was one, that was his concern. So so we can answer that, get a proper answer to that. And another one of his comments was about the mirroring the MTA's percent for the art program. So do we have any input on that?
Um, well, in, in the MTA's capital program, if projects of a certain size have to have some percentage going to an art program in, in their station. I'm not an expert exactly on that, so I might defer to the MTA for specifics of that for the post-hearing. But this project would not preclude improvements in, you know, art improvements in the, in the station because that's sort of part of the MTA capital program. But we are not, I think they're sort of slightly different.
Thank.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Rumpus.
Yes, actually, I noticed the slide twenty-two that you did not receive any comments there from the Queens Borough President. I was just wondering, have you been in contact with their office?
You know, we, we checked in with them last week and we haven't yet received anything from them, but I, you know, they had a lot of public hearings. I anticipate getting something from.
No, we certainly would welcome input and we consider input from the Borough Presidents even following their deadline date.
Thank you.
Other comments? Okay, then we will look forward to the public hearing on this matter on Wednesday.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Angela and Chris.
Thank you.
All right. Excellent. Moving on, the tenth item on our agenda is a city council modification scope determination to the nine oh nine Castle Hill Avenue rezoning. The council proposes to eliminate MIH option two, leaving option one. Staff believe that this modification is within scope.
And with that, I will see if there are any questions. Seeing none, I will ask for authorization to send a scope determination letter to the council. Those in favor, please say yay, raise your hand.
Yay.
Yay.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll send the letter. Thank you.
Okay, moving on to future votes scheduled for a decision on Wednesday, June twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one. We have Bennett Avenue, Murray Street and Page Avenue, seventy-nine Holcomb Avenue, fifty-seven and sixty-three Osborne Avenue, and twenty-six Keegan Lane, all our Staten Island, South Richmond certifications. Not see, let me just, not seen any raised hands, we will move on. Staff are preparing reports for consideration on Wednesday, July fourteenth, twenty-twenty-one for the Holyrood Episcopal Church, Glacia Santa Cruz, and the educational building in Manhattan Community District Two. These are both individual landmark designations. The briefings were in your materials. If there's any questions, you can let me know. And then for post-hearing follow-up, we have Joey Razor here to discuss Beach Sixty-seventh Street rezoning. Joy.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners. Jeff, you can go to the next slide. This application is returning to the commission for a post-hearing follow-up after the public hearing on June ninth, during which the commission raised questions related to the development potential of the nursing home site and the EAS with action scenario. As a reminder, the project details are listed here. Next slide, please. The project area is outlined here in black with the development site in red. The project area is located at the mid-block flanking Beach Sixty-seventh Street, which is a wide street, in a low-to-medium-density neighborhood. The development site to the east consists of seven lots, and the proposed district would be mapped two hundred and thirty feet from Beach Channel Drive. The site is improved with a two-story church, a three-story residential building, a community garden, a thirty-four space parking lot, and vacant lands. The co-applicant, God's Battalion of Prayer Properties, Inc., owns all the properties within the development site. The rezoning area also encompasses the eight-story non-complying nursing home across the street, located southwest from the development site, and you can see that here. Next slide, please. The nursing home is currently built to an FAR of one point three seven and seventy-six thousand, six hundred and ninety-two square feet and is a longstanding institutional use that was constructed in nineteen seventy-four. Due to the recently adopted zoning for coastal flood resiliency provisions, nursing homes within the floodplain are limited to fifteen thousand square foot enlargement. Additionally, a new nursing home would not be able to be constructed on this site under CCFR due to the site's location within the floodplain. Because of these restrictions on development under CCFR, the development potential for the existing use is minimal and limited to fifteen thousand square feet of an enlargement. For a conservative analysis, the twenty-twenty-one EAS analyzed a with-action scenario of a seven-story residential building on the nursing home site. Under the R six zoning districts, the building could be built to an FAR of three point six, yielding approximately two hundred and one thousand square feet of floor area and about two hundred and twenty-one dwelling units, of which approximately forty-four units would be made permanently affordable under MIH. However, there are no known plans for redevelopment of the nursing home, and it's not currently anticipated. If it were to be redeveloped, DCP believes that the proposed R six district would facilitate appropriate development consistent with the context of the neighborhood. Including the site within the rezoning boundary anchors the R six district on either side of Beach Sixty-seventh Street and directly connects it to the R five D C one three district that's mapped along Beach Channel Drive, which is the primary east-west corridor in the neighborhood. And with that, that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you for that follow-up, Joy. Commissioner Levin.
Thank you for that, Joy. I don't have a question about the nursing home site. I think you've, you know, this is clearly, it was a concern raised by the community board. They wanted that site taken out. I think you've certainly satisfied me that what's proposed makes sense there. But I do hope, we did have a discussion at the public hearing about the desirability of having the Ayers Building, you know, within the development site, located within a floodplain, and I think as the conversation began, the applicants kind of shrugged it off and said, oh, well, we'll do whatever is required. I think as we got deeper into the conversation, there was a recognition that though, even though an Ayers Building is allowed within the floodplain, there was a heightened need for attention to evacuation plans should a flood occur, and I hope that our report, this is not anything as a matter of zoning or anything that we can require, but I do hope that our report reflects that conversation and emphasizes the importance of planning well for a vulnerable population on the development site.
Great suggestion. We'll make sure that it does, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Okay. I think that concludes our agenda. Anything more, Ryan?
Nope, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you all for this lengthy meeting, and we'll see you at our public hearing at ten AM on Wednesday. Bye.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.